Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material personal interest and conflict of interest where relevant, and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Councillors, are there any apologies? There being none, councillors, minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,601 meeting held on Tuesday the 27th of August 2019 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks, that the minutes of the 4,601st meeting of council held on the 27th of August 2019 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant today, Selena Utting, who will be addressing the Chamber on Depression and Suicide Prevention Support Groups. Welcome, Ms Utting. You have five minutes. You're free to sit or stand, whichever is your preference, and your time begins when you begin.
Okay. Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors. Thank you to councillor Marks for inviting Self Help Queensland to visit you, and I offer apologies from Graham Willetts, who can't be with us today. Self Help Queensland is funded by Queensland Health through the Self Care Funding Programme. Our office is at Brisbane City Council Community Lease at Sunnybank, next door to Kim Marks and her great team Heidi and Lauren. I would like to take the opportunity also to congratulate the council on two of their excellent teams that you have, the community halls team and the community development team. Without them, our work would be much more difficult. Self Help Queensland supports people to support each other. We provide support for support groups. Whether you face chronic pain, mental health concerns, an avalanche of care responsibilities, suicide, grief and loss, healthy ageing, autism, amputation disability, loss of cultural connections, or any other kind of health and wellbeing issue, there is a support group for you. That's our job. We connect people to groups, we help groups to help their people. We also help people to start new groups when there isn't one, and help groups to connect with each other. When someone is facing a health issue, we hope that they have friends and family, doctors and health professionals to assist them. However, if Graham was here, Graham would tell you that from his lived experience of depression, sometimes the people that you really need are those who've been through the same as you. Someone who's been there, your peers, who may still be going through the ups and downs of a major health concern or trauma. When Self Help Queensland suggested to Graham, why don't you start a group, he said, oh, I don't think I'm well enough. But he's been leading a depression and suicide prevention peer group now for 20 years. To illustrate the power of peer support, when I visited another group recently, someone told me that before they joined their group, they didn't believe that recovery from addiction was possible. But after going to their group, they believe it is possible and they have hope. At another group for rare disease, a man told me that before he came to the group, he never met anyone with his condition before, after more than 10 years of being a sufferer. So when you're not well, when English is not your first language, when you're new to a place, or you can't drive yourself, or a major life event has occurred, it can be very hard to be a joiner. The research evidence in mental health shows that it's a major struggle for someone to join a group, and it can take many attempts for someone to walk through the door or pick up the phone. The Brisbane City Council can help Self Help Queensland to support self-support groups through the basics. We need free and low-cost accessible community venues. Self Help Queensland started in 1982, yet this is still the number one request we receive from groups is to find them a venue. Venues like the Seven Hills Hub in councillor Cook's ward of Morningside are an excellent addition to the meeting resources that we have. But often the pricing of venues, particularly the weekend rates, make them too expensive for small and newly emerging groups. The cost of mental ill health in the community is estimated at $4,000 per taxpayer. So the return on investment of the council for further supporting low-cost venues, reduced community hire, and effective and subsidised transport is therefore substantial. Peer support is often overlooked in medical referrals, but what Graham and our group members would tell you, it's the most important thing that helped them get through coping or through to recovery. So Self Help Queensland's challenge to the council and to the community is let's prescribe people, not just pills. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite councillor Maddick to respond to you. Councillor Maddick.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Ms Utting, for coming and speaking this afternoon on this very important issue that affects our community. I'm very glad to hear that you're getting great value out of that Sunnybank lease area and that it's become a hub for you. Certainly councillor Marks is very passionate about our local community and that facility and making it accessible to as many groups as she can has absolutely been her number one priority. So I appreciate that that is providing a benefit to you. The issue that you raised is a very important one in regards to accessibility. The work that you provide in being a conduit between different organisations and people needing support is obviously a vital service. And access to low-cost or no-cost facilities is always important. I'm more than happy to have a look at this issue for you with officers in regards to opportunities that might exist to work with you in being able to make more of our facilities accessible. Seven Hills in councillor Cook's ward is a great example of a community hub that is available to residents in different needs and in different situations. And making sure that we provide the maximum amount of accessibility to it has always been an important issue. I know that we've worked with councillor Cook, particularly, and in particular looking at the facility there, with the recent improvements that we made with providing even more accessible space at the back of the main auditorium, and being able to provide that up into different meeting rooms, I think will provide added opportunity within the local area. So I really want to acknowledge the work that you and the other volunteers do within your organisation on this important issue, and being able to provide that connection to people at times of need, and being able to facilitate those opportunities with different groups, especially emerging groups. As all councillors, we see all the time a number of groups coming to us for opportunities to deal with a particular issue in their ward, needing the support to do that. It's great to see that you're doing that. But I will follow up on your behalf around this issue of access and how we can work better with you to provide those better opportunities. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Mr Tann, we'll show you around. So councillor Cook and Ms Utting, we must move on. Councillor Cook. Councillors, we'll now commence our question time. Is there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Chair of any standing committees? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this administration is committed to getting residents home quicker and safer. Can you please update the chamber on the latest plans to improve safety and reduce congestion around Indrapilly in my ward of Walter Taylor?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Mackay, and I know, like the rest of the team, you are committed to making sure people in your area get home quicker and safer. And it's not only about getting home quicker, it is also about getting home safer. And this particular upgrade that we're moving forward with now, going out to community consultation on, is all about both of those things. Safety and also making sure we increase the capacity of that intersection to deal with the growing demands on our road and transport network. Now, this is a project which we are now out to consultation with, with two different options. And so it is quite a unique situation where we're going out to the community saying, here are two options that we have modelled, that we have done some work on. We want to know your views going forward on what you think the best option is. We're keen to listen to the community, incorporate their feedback into the project, so that we can get the project designed next year. This is a project which is important not only to the ward of Walter Taylor, but other surrounding wards as well, and indeed the wider western suburbs area, and in fact also through some of the southern corridor suburbs as well. And so we all know that this is a big bottleneck. We know that there are serious safety concerns at this intersection. There have been 32 recorded accidents between 2013 and 2018, with 10 of them requiring hospitalisation and a further 17 requiring medical treatment. So that is, you know, a significant safety record at that intersection and one that needs to be dealt with. And this particular project that we move forward with, in both cases, will definitely deal with those safety issues. We're keen to hear what the community has to say, and we're also keen to get on with these projects. Investing in a balanced way across the transport network is absolutely critical. So whether it's investing in green bridges, like the Kangaroo Point Bridge that we released the preliminary business case on today, or whether it's investing in suburban road upgrades, we're investing right across the spectrum. This particular upgrade will be assisted with funding from the federal government, and in particular the federal member, Julian Simmons, who has been a strong advocate for this upgrade, together with councillor Mackay and councillor Richards in the Pullenvale Ward as well. So we are keen to get on with it. We're keen to invest in the different modes of travel. And it's interesting to see what alternatives exist out there when it comes to these kind of upgrades. Because we know that the Labour Party has given up on the western suburbs. We know that they have ceded that ground entirely to the Greens. They can't even manage to poll higher than the Greens in the western suburbs. They don't care about the western suburbs. But when it comes down to the choice of the LNP versus the Greens, that choice should be one that local residents take a big interest in. Because what it means is that the Greens hate roads and hate road upgrades, and will not support any kind of road upgrade like this. We know that is the case. So that is a very ideological view of things, and not a practical, real-world kind of view. If the residents of the western suburbs want real action when it comes to upgrading the transport network, providing options, whether it's public transport, road upgrades, new green bridges, we can deliver those options and those choices. And we certainly don't take a anti-car, anti-roads approach like the Greens are. This is all about making sure we deliver results right across Brisbane, in the suburbs of Brisbane, in one of the key regional hubs of our city, one that is carrying literally tens of thousands of vehicles each day. 55,000 vehicles travel through this intersection each and every day. That is a significant number by any measure, and one that we are absolutely committed to progressing as a council in partnership with the federal government.
Further questions? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the Brisbane Pride Festival has started in earnest and will culminate in the annual march to New Farm Park on September 21. In previous years, senior politicians such as former mayor Graham Quirk and premier Anastasia Palache have led the march to send a strong message about the modern, inclusive city that is Brisbane. Will you, in your first year as mayor, send that same strong message and join me to march with pride on September 21?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Cumming for the question. Look, I don't know what I'm doing on September 21, I will have a look. But I know that my diary is now pretty much fully booked until December. And that is an ongoing challenge for anyone doing this role. But what I will say is I am absolutely committed to the diversity, to the inclusiveness of our community. And what I would do is question the motives behind this question, because this question is all about dividing.
Point of order.
It's all about dividing.
A point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Yes, the meeting's local laws prohibit both discussion about the question, but also imputing motive, which clearly the Lord Mayor has expressed that he's doing here in questioning the leader of the opposition.
Thank you councillor Johnston. The question has barely begun. The Lord Mayor was barely able to finish that sentence, and I will allow him to continue. Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
I move dissent in your failure to properly enforce the rules of procedure.
Seconded.
I've got a dissent motion from councillor Johnston and councillor Griffiths. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I will simply say this. I would hate to think that the leader of the opposition was trying to play some kind of divisive game here. Because we saw these disgraceful individuals try to do that on the 8th of April, when I was sworn in as Lord Mayor. We saw the filth, the disgusting grime that they tried to peddle, and that is not how you create an inclusive city.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
That is about dividing.
There's a point of order, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston.
Calling any opposition councillor filth, or their actions in democratic debate in this place filth, is beyond inappropriate.
Please don't debate the substance.
It is a breach of the meeting's local laws about referring to councillors appropriately.
You must don't just get up on the microphone and say whatever you wish.
It's a breach of the meeting's local law in referring to councils appropriately.
This is not a properly made point of order. Lord Mayor, please continue.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, the Lord Mayor of this city just called opposition councillors filth.
No, he did not.
I find that to be a breach of the standing local laws, and it is inappropriate to refer adversely to other councillors, and I ask you to ask him to withdraw it.
Your statements are incorrect. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And you are correct, I didn't call anyone filth. I said they were peddling filth, which are two very different things, but which is the reality of what they were trying to peddle in the past. They are on the record trying to do that. They are on the record trying to cause division in our community. And I am on the record in supporting a tolerant, diverse society where, you know what? People can't.
Hey, councillor Johnston, councillor Johnston, you will cease interjecting. Councillor Johnston, you will not interject like that again in this meeting, or you will be warned.
I attend council meetings in good faith, and I do not peddle filth, and I will not be referred to by the Lord Mayor as doing so.
Councillor Johnston, you are not an opposition councillor. Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston. Councillor Johnston. Which is the right one? That is an act of disorder. Councillor Johnston, your conduct in this council meeting is disorderly, and in accordance with 186A of the City of Brisbane Act 2010, I order that you leave the meeting place and stay out for the rest of the meeting. I'll accept a reference to the councillor conduct review panel. You cannot swear in these meetings. I've made it abundantly clear again and again and again. You cannot swear councillor Johnston. Please remove yourself from the meeting.
No, I, well, we can do this the hard way or the easy way, but my understanding is that 168A is in addition to, not in exception of, the powers under the meeting's local law. The meeting's local law require you to warn me first, go through a process, and if that is not complied with, then you can exercise your discretion to use that. We've just been to the Supreme Court of Queensland where this very matter was decided in my favour, and I do not believe you are exercising your obligations under the Act correctly.
Councillor, I have, at the beginning of a meeting earlier in this session, asked people to cease swearing. You mocked me at that time. You then, in a subsequent meeting, swore again in an interjection, and now you have sworn on the microphone. You cannot conduct yourself in this manner. I, I...
Mr Chairman, that's not what I'm saying. I'm absolutely saying to you, you have every right to take action against me, but you have expelled me from a council meeting not in accordance with the meeting law procedures. This is the problem, this has always been the problem, and I can say to you, we've been to court about this matter, council lost, they're going to have to pay up, and I'm still waiting for that, Mr Chairman. I'm just saying to you, I don't believe you've gone through the right procedure here.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
The guest councillor Sri, point of order.
And in the interest of moving on the meeting, can we just consider councillor Johnston's been warned and then continue with the meeting?
No, no, I take councillor Johnston's complaints valid, and I'm waiting for legal advice. Councillors, I trust that you understand I am serious when I say that you cannot swear in this place. All right? We will now return to Lord Mayor's answer to councillor Cumming's question. How much longer is it? There is 3 minutes and 27 seconds remaining. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Look, Mr Chair, I was putting on the record my support for a tolerant, diverse community. And I genuinely believe that that is the community we should all aspire to live in, and that is the community that we should all support. And it is quite clear to me what Labour is trying to do with this. And that's not supportive of a tolerant community. That is all about driving division, creating conflict, manufacturing conflict, and I don't think it is appropriate from civic leaders to behave that way. And so I will simply say, I will have a look at what's happening on the 21st of September. I know that I have already a very fully booked diary, particularly on the weekends when there is so many community events and festivals happening right across the city. But certainly, if there's an availability to go, I would have no concerns at all about being involved with that. And I know that our councillors will be supporting it as well, and Vicky Howard will be out there waving the flag and supporting the event, as she has done for years and years, as our team has done, and as we will continue to do.
Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, can you please shed some light on events last week relating to the disruption on Victoria Bridge and whether the partial closure related to the Brisbane Metro?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I am very happy to answer the question from councillor Huang, because I note he is very excited about the metro project when it finally gets off the ground. It is a transformative project for our city and will directly link to his ward through Eight Mile Plains, but the advantage will be seen right across Brisbane. It is no secret that the metro will run across the Victoria Bridge, and it is a crucial part of our transport network. Using existing infrastructure is the smart way to fix public transport in the city. And there are, of course, minor works that we have to do as a part of that infrastructure when we're dealing with infrastructure that has been built for a very long time. And that's why it might have been interesting to some councillors last week to see the Victoria Bridge was closed to general traffic. And I'm happy to shed some light on what actually did happen, and the fast that we saw continue for 24 hours. Unfortunately, it was not our contractors, and I say unfortunately not because of the damage that was done, but because we are not over there doing any works in Metro at the moment. We were not involved at all in the severing of the cable, and I can categorically state that we were not working on any council project, including Metro. But there is one person in this room, Mr Chair, who didn't need any evidence or any information, or any of the information he was given, he disregarded before making up his mind on exactly what had happened last week. He instantly knew who the guilty party was, and that was councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cassidy was out straight away rubbing his hands together. Cluso Cassidy, the detective from Deegan, was out searching. It's got to be Metro, I know it's going to be Metro. And what was his verdict? Within an instant. It was Metro that done it, Mr Chair, it was Metro that done it. So he got straight on to the Metro project. Straight after 2 o'clock, I can hear the Pink Panther music going in the background. What's happening, guys? What's happening? And the team very clearly explained to councillor Cassidy that we're not over there, councillor Cassidy, we're not doing early works. Rumour has it he was wearing fake glasses and a moustache, but it can't be confirmed because he was on the phone. But this conspiracy theory that is now our fault for something that's happening in South Brisbane after I have stood here, week after week, saying, give us the early work approvals to get over there, didn't stop councillor Cassidy. He was straight up there on TV, up there as fast as he could, to claim it was a council cover-up. This is all about what they're doing over there with Metro. And he was ably, or not so ably as the case may be, supported in this conspiracy by their Labour candidate for Lord Mayor, their current Labour candidate for Lord Mayor. And interestingly enough, councillor Cassidy took Channel 7 and ranting Rod took over on Channel 9. And I guess Rod probably wasn't allowed on Patrick Tongdon's turf, so we had to stick to Channel 9 because the battle for the Lord Mayor candidacy continues, doesn't it, Mr Chair? There was only one problem with this theory. Brisbane Metro has a rock-solid alibi. Unfortunately, we have got the Australian Labor Party in William Street totally blocking this project. Councillor Cassidy should have more faith in Minister Bailey's stalling tactics. We've spoken about here often enough. It would be great if we could start works over there. We would love to be over there and seeing what type of cables are under the ground, making sure that we can get started in the locations. But we can't because the Australian Labor Party won't get out of the way. We've had nearly 300 meetings on this project now, and they won't even sign off on the early works. For us to have a look at what's there or move the sewer pump to make sure we can cater for QUU, even though we've asked over and over and over. And this is just basic stuff for any project. But we have learnt through this whole ordeal is that even though if we had the approvals now, we could get started, we're not getting that permission. And what we've learnt from last week is that there are a lot of cables underneath Melbourne Street, a lot of cables. And you need to be very, very careful that you don't drill into those cables. But it wasn't us. And instead of listening to what the council officers told him, he just rang up the journalists to get on TV for a council cover-up. This sheds some light on exactly what the Lord Mayor was just talking about. Throw the murders hard and fast and just hope that something sticks. Don't worry about the truth, just get onto TV and hope that something sticks. What I would like Cluso Cassidy to have done last week is pick up the phone to his Labor mates in William Street and ask them to give us our formal approvals so we can get cracking on the Metro and stop the congestion in Brisbane.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the deputy mayor. Deputy Mayor, the Brisbane City Council bus driver who was attacked with an axe and robbed just last week has asked the Brisbane City Council, his employer, to be reimbursed approximately $300 for personal effects that were also stolen when the cash box on the bus was stolen. And council has refused to reimburse any of those items. How can your administration be so callous?
Deputy Mayor.
I thank councillor Cassidy for the question, and I have to say, I was absolutely as horrified as anybody in this chamber was last week to hear about this unprovoked attack at Forest Lake on one of our bus drivers who was simply doing his job. Thankfully, the bus driver did use his de-escalation training, and he did calm down the incident, and he did very calmly ring through to the depot and say what was going on, and he was okay to return to work the next day. But this is absolutely unacceptable on our networks. We have been calling for more than two years now for the state government to step up and provide some more senior network officers to protect our bus drivers and passengers.
Point of order to councillor Cassidy.
On relevance, this is a question about this council not reimbursing personal effects that were stolen during this attack. The deputy mayor is not, not... The deputy mayor is not being relevant in this answer. This is a very specific question, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are 100% committed to the safety of our bus drivers and our passengers. We always have been, we always will be. Stamping out crime is 100% the responsibility of the Queensland-
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Again, on relevance, you didn't make any ruling, you just said the words deputy mayor. I seek your ruling. This is a question about personal effects that were stolen during this attack and council has now gone back to the driver and said, no, we're not going to reimburse you any of those. This is a casual bus driver that cannot afford this.
I appreciate that, thank you councillor Cassidy. There's no need to debate now, I believe that you're using a point of order to debate, which as you know is against the rules. I will ask the deputy mayor that while the matter, I appreciate that the matter, the information you're presenting is general and councillor Cassidy's question is specific, I ask you to be relevant to the question at hand, please.
His question was very specific, but when we are talking about assaults on drivers, what we are seeing with our regular monitoring and working is that these assaults are extremely random. Once we've seen it at the Charm Side, next week's at Forest Lake. We need to ask the community to have a good look at themselves and the way that they are dealing with any of our workers that are front and centre of our community, whether it's bus drivers, whether it's nurses, whether it's paramedics, whether it's teachers, nobody deserves to go to work and feel unsafe. And I'm particularly concerned as Chair of Public and Active Transport that this continues to happen when we have a state government that will not provide the protection that they need with senior network officers. With regards to this incident, with regards-
Councillor Strunk, councillor Strunk, do not, I don't mind, it doesn't, please, the substance of your interjection is immaterial in this matter. Councillor Strunk, cease interjecting, please. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to this incident, it is still being investigated by the council officers at the depot, by Transport for Brisbane, within conjunction with the union representatives as well. I'd love to answer the question, Mr. Chair. I would love to answer the question if they'd give me half a chance.
The question, the question was asked in silence, it'll be, the answer will be heard in silence, is my opinion. Deputy Mayor, have you concluded? No, deputy mayor, please continue.
No, because as they keep interjecting, I haven't answered the question and I'd love to do it. With regards to this incident, it is still being investigated. This is the first that I have heard that there has been a request from the bus driver about his personal belongings. I have heard nothing that there was any personal belongings or things taken from this bus driver in this incident as well. And I am more than happy to go and speak to the Transport for Brisbane staff and talk to them about reimbursing this officer because it's not something that we want to see. But I would just like to say that we already provide appropriate security on the 100 bus route with static guards at the Anala interchange, as well as hoppers with accompanying rapid response vehicles. The extra security measures that councillor Strunk screamed across the room at me would have made no difference in this incident. When people want to do the wrong thing, they will do the wrong thing. And I ask the community again to take a hard look at themselves and how they treat our frontline workers. And for the Queensland government to stand up and provide those senior network officers that we need to make our bus drivers safe.
Further questions, councillor Cunningham.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, councillor Matic. Councillor Matic, this administration recently announced the trial of extended hours at Brisbane Square Library. Can you outline for the chamber the details of this initiative and how the administration is giving residents more to see and do?
Councillor Matic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank the deputy for the question on what is a really exciting announcement by this administration with, by the leadership of this Lord Mayor to continue for us to deliver more and to do around our city, and in this particular instance within our libraries. Our libraries, of course, have become so much more than just a place to borrow or read a book. It's now become an important part of our community hub. It provides so many opportunities across all our libraries to residents with all different types of social groups and interest groups to be able to engage. But importantly also, a place to connect and to meet. And that's why the Lord Mayor had made this announcement about extending the operating hours at Brisbane Square Library. Brisbane Square Library, of course, is our largest and flagship library and it's recognised as an important place within the CBD for people to connect through the absolute myriad of services that council offers through that library. You know, Mr. Chair, we just get over 600,000 visitors to the library. We've got 475,000 loans happening through the library. But we've also got over 1,300 programmes delivered just through Brisbane Square every year. And I've been, in this role, been able to see a number of those programmes that benefit the community so widely. Our reading programme, Storytime, told by elders to children. Our English classes for newly arrived residents. The different social programmes we run through community organisation, our Writers and Residents Programme. It just goes on and on. And that's why the announcement by the Lord Mayor of extending operating hours is so important. Now, this programme will start from Wednesday, the 25th of September, and it's about extending the operating hours till midnight on Wednesdays and Friday nights. And the programme will run as a trial for a year. And by being able to extend the hours that we have, we'll provide even more opportunities for residents and visitors to Brisbane Square Library. As our city continues to grow and we have more and more residents coming in and living within the CBD area, and so having the library open for those extended hours will provide such an important service. This is a clear example of this administration, this Lord Mayor's passionate commitment to enhancing our services within our libraries, providing more to see and do and making sure that we deliver on those core deliverables, which is about what our libraries are. This administration has a very strong track record of investment within our libraries. Over this four-year term, we've seen significant improvements across a number of our libraries at Garden City, at New Farm, the recent improvements at Tuwong, the work we're currently doing at Stones Corner, the upgrades to the Ash Grove Library, the list goes on and on, Mr. Chairman. Unlike those opposite, in the dark days of when they were in administration, where their goal was to shut libraries down because they were more focused on cost than they were about service delivery. This administration is clearly about making sure that we do more for our residents, about making sure that they get absolute value, and that's what this does. We of course also, Mr. Chairman, as part of our extension of our libraries, are working on Bracket Ridge at the moment to build a brand-new library there for residents on the north side. Making sure again that this is about service delivery. We are listening to our residents about the need for them to have more opportunities with our libraries and we continue to deliver on that. So through this experience at Brisbane Square Library, we will clearly be able to see over the trial period of this year the different feedback from residents, the things that they would like to see more of, the improvements that we can make. This is again about listening and making sure that we're continuing to deliver. By being able to do that, we can continue to see those increasing numbers of residents through the library and making sure that we are offering exactly the kind of services they'd like to see. You know, Mr. Chair, by doing this, we can, we've also seen, or will see, an increase in the number of services that we offer through there and with the variety of services that we have. You know, the feedback that I've received participating in some of the English conversation groups from international students and residents was so positive in regards to the experiences they receive, but importantly also the new relationships that they formed within those groups. For a lot of the students being here for the first time, not having a social network to connect with, these extended operating hours will give those students, for example, even greater opportunity to engage locally and be part of our Brisbane community. Because our libraries are so much more, have become so much of that, about providing those ability for people to connect, to be part of that wider community as a whole. These are the kind of things that we really want to focus on. And our libraries continue to grow strength on strength to be able to deliver these important outcomes. It's great to see that through this programme, we will also have more opportunities around, for example, our rise-
Councillor Matic, your time's expired.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. When companies make political campaign donations to the Queensland Liberal National Party, do they receive access to elected representatives or LNP policy decision-makers in return?
Lord Mayor.
Everyone has access to elected representatives in the state of Queensland. Like, I think that's a pretty simple question.
Further questions, councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, earlier this morning you announced that council has completed and released its key findings document for the Kangaroo Point Bridge preliminary business case. In light of this announcement, can you please update the chamber on the progress being made on the five new green bridges for Brisbane?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Davis, for the question. Today is a milestone with the delivery of the preliminary business case for the Kangaroo Point pedestrian bridge. It is very, very exciting that Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna's administration can take the first steps to delivering a bridge that has been spoken about since the 1860s. I think the difference though, Mr. Chair, is that when this administration promises something, we actually deliver it. So this was actually first raised with, when Lord Mayor Shrinna first came to office with five new green bridges across the Brisbane River. Of course, Kangaroo Point Bridge is the first one off the rank today with the preliminary business case. We also have Tuwong to West End, St Lucia to West End, Breakfast Crink with that fantastic link from Newstead to Hamilton and of course Bell Bowery through to better public transport options at the Wakehold train station. We understand that easing congestion isn't just about building more roads or tunnels, it's about getting cars off the road. That is what these green bridges are all about, providing alternative travel options to get you home quicker and safer. As I said, first raised in 1860s, so something that's always been looked at, being able to walk across easily from Kangaroo Point down to the city reach. But it's taken, you know, nearly two centuries, a century and a half, to actually get council to get on to the business case and get on to build it. There was a lot of things that happened in between. Biggest flood ever in 1893, a few in between. Story Bridge in the 1930s would have been seen as a solution at that time by many as all our congestion woes being solved for the rest of eternity. But as a growing city and a maturing city, I think it's time now that we not only have more options, but we have the opportunities to think about how we travel through Brisbane as well. And we did get some encouraging numbers from that business case that we saw come out today. First off, over 5,000 trips a day will be taking, getting Brisbane residents across this bridge at this point. That'll rise to over 6,000 by 2036. And that doesn't take into consideration those trips which are purely recreational, tourist-based. So that's just your commuter trips that are going to be able to take that opportunity. It will be a bridge for all. Compared to Carilpa Bridge, it will carry 1,800 more people each day. In addition, think about the service this bridge will have when we have major events. Two weekends ago, we had 25,000 people trying to get to Kangaroo Point for the bridge to Brisbane. There was a 100-metre line-up for the Cross River ferry service and people trying to cross Story Bridge to get to Captain Burke Park was enormous. Just those type of events will be held with this footbridge as well. But whether it's for work, leisure, cycling, or even photo opportunities, because I saw many of them as I was running along the river last night, taking that beautiful shot of the bright red Story Bridge. It'll be a new vantage point for that as well. It's about less cars on the road. We're seeing the opportunities for people that live in those eastern suburbs like Kangaroo Point, east Brisbane, right through to councillor Cook's Ward, that will be able to bust to Kangaroo Point and walk across rather than having to go all the way over the Story Bridge and hook back round through the city as well. This bridge has been confirmed as feasible, value-for-money investment for our city and obviously a major link in our wider transport network. And we are very pleased to deliver this business case today with the help of state government grant and hoping that they also continue support for this bridge. It has been recognised in their south-east Queensland regional plan as important infrastructure for the city and we hope that they see the importance of continuing this project to go forward as well. There is of course $6.1 million in this year's budget to get into designing and planning and we will be out to consultation beginning in November this year to talk to the residents right around those eastern suburbs in the CBD or the whole of Brisbane of people who would like to contribute for what they'd like to see for this bridge as well. We ask everyone to have their say, attend one of the sessions, let us know on emails what they'd like to see. But we are committed to making sure we can get home quicker and safer. And if the option for you is that you can walk or bike or e-scooter, even better. And then of course the tourism and the visitor economy on the weekends. It is all a part of this administration's commitment to making the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today.
Further questions, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your deputy has confirmed that no written expert advice was sought or received before this LNP administration voted to spend a staggering $6.2 million acquiring three treeless housing blocks in Mount Crevat East, allegedly to protect koalas. This file here, all of it, contains information that officers have provided. But the file that officers have provided does not contain one shred of evidence that koalas lived on this land by council officers. Can you detail other instances where this council has made multimillion-dollar purchases from the bushland fund without any written expert advice?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Griffiths for the question. We will continue to buy blocks of land to save them for our wildlife, including our koalas. What we won't tolerate though is the state government's ongoing sell-off of their bushland and cynical attempts to balance their budget by getting the state government-
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
This is in no way relevant, Mr. Chair. The question was, were any other blocks of bushland or so-called bushland purchased using this money without any expert advice? Nothing to do with the state government.
Thank you. The question isn't even thirty, the answer I should say is barely 20 seconds old and the Lord Mayor has quite a deal of time and he will answer the question, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would simply say to Labour, be careful what you ask because our record is very clear, we are all about protecting bushland. We are all about buying private land to make sure that we add to our habitat areas. And in this particular case, I can tell you, as a resident in that part of Brisbane, that is at the epicentre of a high level of koala activity. It is between places like White's Hill, Pine Mountain, Mount Thompson, Mount Crevat Outlook. There are corridors all the way through there and koalas are moving through those areas on a regular basis. We know that, we know that. And in fact, on this site, on this site, there was a koala and it died. On this site. So to suggest-
Point of order.
Councillor, I point of order to you councillor Griffiths.
It's misleading the chamber, there's nothing in this file about that, nothing.
Well, do not use points of order to debate. That is an act of disorder. Please, I direct you to not use points of order to debate another speaker.
We don't need to use ratepayers' money to pay consultants to know what we already know. And as I said, local knowledge absolutely shows that there are koalas moving through this area. And I want to know what councillor Griffiths has against us saving this block of land? What does he have against it? Why would he be against it? Yet he's quite happy to let his state colleagues flog off every bit of bushland they can to make a quick buck and run a campaign to try and get ratepayers to pick up the bill. It is disgusting and disgraceful what the state government is doing to our bushland in this city. It is absolutely disgraceful and we will expose them because we are about protecting our environment and our koala habitat.
Lord Mayor, I must acknowledge councillor Cassidy's point of order.
Again, on relevance, the question was what other purchases using bushland acquisition money were made without any expert advice? What is the Lord Mayor hiding?
Lord Mayor, I draw your attention to the substance of the question, please continue. You have, you have three minutes.
As I said, we don't need to pay consultants to know what we already know. We know where the koalas are roaming, we know where they're, I mean, the reality is, what evidence do we have to suggest that the state government has done any work to justify selling off their bushland where there are koalas nearby? I'd like to see those reports, I'd like to see the expert reports there.
A point of order to you, councillor-
The question was clearly about council land and how we're spending money on our bushland, not the state government. Councillor Griffiths wants us to spend money on expert reports. We want to spend money on saving bushland and regenerating bushland. That's the difference here. We are committed to doing it and we are committed to buying those private blocks of land where there are known koala or high wildlife activity. And in this particular case, as I said, everyone knows- And in this particular case, as I said, everyone knows, everyone who's got some local knowledge knows, a koala died on this site. So to suggest we need to pay someone to find that out is ludicrous. Absolutely ludicrous. We are passionate about making sure that Brisbane is Australia's koala capital. We are passionate about saving bushland. We have a record as long as your arm when it comes to buying up private land, bringing it into public ownership, and replanting and regenerating that land, and we will continue to do so unashamedly. But what we will also continue to do is to fight the state government's bushland sell-off right across the city. Right across the city, they are trying to flog off bushland, and we're going to fight it.
Point of order. Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
The Lord Mayor didn't answer the question. I assume he's now finished his answer, but he in no way attempted to answer that question, Mr Chair, at all, about what other bushland acquisition purchases were made without any expert advice. Just disgrace... That is disgraceful.
Again, what you've done is an act of disorder. You can't debate... Please, all councillors, please do not use points of order to debate the speaker at any point. That concludes question time. Councillors, I draw your... Point of order. A point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to seek suspension of so much as standing orders to move the following urgency motion. The Brisbane City Council conducts a full external independent audit of all cab charge used by LNP councillors to determine which councillors have improperly used cab charge vouchers for personal travel.
Seconded.
There's an urgency motion from councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Cook. Councillor Cassidy, you have three minutes to establish urgency. Please limit your comments to why the matter is urgent. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. This is very urgent, because this has been left to fester now for a month by this Lord Mayor, because he has refused to act over the last month when these questions have been put to him. Every time he has been asked to clean up this disgusting mess that his councillors have dragged the Brisbane City Council into, he has refused to act. And what has been revealed just today, and why it is urgent that we deal with this today, is that in answers to questions on notice, not information that the Lord Mayor was willing or freely wanting to give, what he was dragged kicking and screaming to give is that almost $14,000 of ratepayers' funds were used by LNP councillors to travel around in cabs this term so far. Now, the Lord Mayor was dragged kicking and screaming to announce that he will tighten up these guidelines that his ENC committee and his administration signed off on just about two or three months ago, a review of that and signed off on that. Another backflip. And the only reason we're seeing this announcement that the guidelines would be looked at is because LNP councillors have been caught red-handed. Now, we don't know, we don't know how much of this $14,000 in ratepayer funds...
Councillor Cassidy, I appreciate that this is the material point you're trying to make. However, the matter at hand is urgency rather than cab charges. So why must the matter be dealt with right now?
Because I think people are sick and tired of seeing their money wasted, Mr Chair. This has been a rort from day one. The guidelines were clearly inadequate when the Lord Mayor signed off on them, but we have no idea... And these guidelines, these guidelines, why this is urgent, Mr Chair, is that these new guidelines announced tomorrow will do nothing about the thousands of dollars that have probably been rorted by LNP chairs in this place, Mr Chair. We know that on council's own policy, council's own policy when it came to, as flimsy as that was, that it specifically states cab charge credit cards issued only to members of the Establishment and Coordination Committee and the council's chief executive officer. So when councillor Owen was running around the city on cab charges, she was not a... She wasn't the CEO, I'm pretty sure, and she was not a member of ENC. So this needs to be cleared up right now, today. Council should show the people of Brisbane a little respect when it comes to their money, and engage an external auditor to go over the books, and where they have been rorted and where they have been misused, those funds should be repaid immediately.
On the matter of urgency, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
A division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Eyes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour, nineteen against, and two abstentions.
The noes have it. Please return to your seats. Councillors, we now move to the consideration of committee reports. Councillors, the Establishment and Coordination Committee, please. Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Tuesday 27th of August 2019 be adopted.
Do I have a second, then?
Indeed.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor. The report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Tuesday 27th of August 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Lord Mayor.
Yes, Mr Chair. Before I move to the formal items, I just wanted to raise a personal matter, which has caused my absence from a few public events in recent days. Just over one week ago, I developed a severe and serious inner ear infection. With four young kids, I've got a pretty good immunity, but this one was a pretty serious infection, and it caused some internal swelling in my ear, or inside my head. I've been treating it with antibiotics and painkillers, and they appear to be doing their job, but the infection did spread and trigger some problems with my facial nerves, and it's caused facial paralysis on the left-hand side of my face. It is a condition known as Bell's palsy. So I raise it today simply so that councillors and attendants won't think that I'm being unfriendly by not smiling. I can't smile. I... Also, my speech is sometimes affected by this as well, and I just want everyone to know the reason for that. Following the diagnosis, I spent a little bit of time researching the condition. I've been surprised to learn that it is a reasonably common condition, and in talking to a number of people about it, it's been interesting to see just how many people and their families have had someone in their family that has been affected by Bell's palsy. Their advice is usually the same. They say it's very alarming at the time, but it's something that's temporary, and that is good to know. I've been very grateful for people's understanding, and it has certainly given me a fresh respect for people who live with pain or permanent ailments, as many people do in our community. I'm told the condition will resolve itself once the swelling goes down fully. For those who haven't experienced this condition, in my own experience, probably the closest thing to it is going to the dentist and getting those big numbing injections in one side of your face, except that it lasts for several weeks rather than several days. The hardest part for me is simply that I can't smile, like I literally can't smile, even if I try. And if you haven't noticed, I like to smile. I can assure the chamber, it's in no way affecting my passion for this job, or the pace at which Team Shrinna is rolling out our agenda and our positive vision for the city. We will continue to push ahead with our plans for road upgrades across the suburbs, new bridges, Brisbane Metro, and creating Brisbane as Australia's koala capital. Those opposite continue to say that we're moving too fast on projects. We say we're not slowing down for anyone. We are committed to making things happen. And finally, I just wanted to thank the chamber and assure you that I'm smiling on the inside. So, moving to the other items I just wanted to raise at the moment. In terms of the motion we just had regarding cab charges, we have a policy which we're expecting to be considered tomorrow for sign-off by the executive management team in council. As I promised, that policy would make the situation going forward very clear, so there is no avoidance... So there is no room for doubt on what is permitted under the guidelines. As councillors would be aware, since 1983, no one can find any evidence that guidelines have been distributed to any councillor of any party. So this is something I was determined to fix up to make sure there is no ambiguity. And I can confirm, just reading from the guideline here, that we're expecting to get approved tomorrow. Cab charge will be used for official business. An official business means attendance at an event where the name person has an official role. This includes speaking responsibilities, awards or prize presentations, hosting responsibilities, and representing the Lord Mayor. They are the circumstances for which cab charge use will be permitted going forward, and I think that is very clear for everyone. And I think that is a reasonable part of councillors doing their job with the big responsibilities that we all have. But what Labour is asking for is they're asking me to comment on the use of a former cab charge card from a former council chair under a former Lord Mayor about a former policy guideline that was never actually distributed. And I'm not going to do that. What I'm going to do is set the guidelines very clearly going forward so that we are all clear. Now, if you want to talk about guidelines and how they apply, go and ask Minister Mark Bailey about the email scandal that he was caught up in. It was quite, it was quite clear at the time that he was led off with a slap on the wrist because there were no guidelines in place at the time. And we have a similar situation here, which we have rectified. So going forward, there are clear guidelines, and they will be there for everyone to adhere to and for everyone to see. As we usually do, we're lighting up key council assets across the city in support of important community causes. This month is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and on... And today, the Reddick Place and Story Bridge will be lit up in gold to shine a spotlight on this devastating disease. The Kids Cancer Project is collaborating with multiple charities to engage the community and raise awareness about childhood cancer research. Also today, Victoria Bridge will be lit up in red, white, and blue to support Australian National Flag Day. And today marks the 118th birthday of the Australian National Flag. And it was great to have councillors involved in a celebration in King George Square, and also a civic reception to celebrate the significance of our national flag. City Hall will be lit up in purple to celebrate the start of Big Sound Music Festival later on this week, sorry. And also, Victoria Bridge and Reddick Place will be lit up in teal to support the Brisbane Writers' Festival. Moving forward to the formal items on the agenda today. Item A, we have the financial statements and audit general's report for the year ending June 2019. This is something that we do each year going through the Queensland Audit Office, and the Audit Office verifies that council's financial statements are a true and fair view of council's financial performance. This shows once again a demonstration of the strong and responsible management of council's finances and the healthy financial position that we are in. There are always some small changes that council makes as a result of feedback from the auditor general. That is the appropriate part of the process. Each year, they will identify some suggestions for improvement, and each year, we will take on board those suggestions for improvement. So that is a good, positive, productive process, and we will continue that going forward. One of the big changes this year is that the long-term financial sustainability ratios have changed, following the introduction of new accounting standards, as well as recognising the $30 million waste levy grant from the state government as well, to at least partially offset the costs associated with the waste levy, specifically for domestic waste. Throughout the year, council works with the Queensland Audit Office on any issues arising, and we will continue to do so. This year, the QAO have identified areas of improvement to ensure our infrastructure assets recorded on our balance sheet reflect current replacement costs, which can sometimes vary from the book value due to market factors. This audit report certainly doesn't have any notation or mention of concerns about the metro tender, which Labour tried to raise with the Audit Office. They tried to politicise the office of the auditor general, and they were resoundingly put back in their place. We are, when it comes to metro, like we do with other projects, doing the right and responsible thing. We are taking the project forward in a responsible manner. It is a fully funded project, and we will continue to work to get that project underway. Item B is the Brisbane City Council annual report for the 2018-19 financial year, and this is all about demonstrating the real progress we're making to make sure that the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. And we're looking right across the realm of what council does in this document, highlighting the great achievements delivered not only by this administration, but by the many, many council officers who do a fantastic job working out in the community, supporting our community, and delivering results. We all have a right to celebrate what has occurred in the last 12 months, and this report highlights just some of those achievements, some of the important milestones that we've reached in the past 12 months.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
May for an extension.
Extension has been moved by the deputy mayor.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Richards. All those in favour on an extension of time, say aye.
Aye.
Country, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, please continue.
Thank you for your indulgence. The major projects, like the Brisbane Metro, like Kingston Smith Drive upgrade, Winham Road are continuing. All of the major bikeway upgrades are kicking off or underway. Our suburban road upgrades are progressing well. Our investment in bushland and protecting bushland continues, with more than 700 hectares acquired in the past few years, ensuring that we will meet our goal by 2020 of 750 hectares. And so there's a lot to celebrate. But one thing that we will continue to do is, through our programmes, also work to support local business, and in particular, local small business, and that's a big part of our agenda going forward. We've had small business forums right across the city, and they have been so productive and beneficial for the participants, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow night's small business forum out at Ascot, where we do that on a regular basis to engage with local business and do what we can to support them. I commend the annual report to the chamber. Finally, on the agenda is item C, the audit committee report.
Further speakers? councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, in relation to the three items, I'd ask that item A be dealt with serial item for voting purposes, and B and... Items B and C be dealt with together for voting purposes.
I'm just going to repeat that. Item A for voting purposes alone. Voting?
Yep. And B and C together.
Yep.
For voting purposes.
Yep. Please continue.
Thank you. I am going to focus on the annual report, and I'd raise an issue at the start, which I've read, and it's caused me some concern. Page 183 of the report refers to ethical standards, and it says that ethical standards provides proactive advice and assistance to council management on the control of fraud and corruption via council's Fraud and Corruption Control Plan. ES investigates reported or suspected incidents of fraud and other serious crime and misconduct in council, and maintains a focus on raising awareness of council values and fostering ethical behaviour. It goes on to say, ES received a total of 443 individual matters during the period 1st July 2018 to 30th of June 2019. That's actually up... That's actually up, last year's annual report was 271. Following assessment, 25 complaints were considered to be Crime and Corruption Commission-related. Last year, there was only 16 which were crime and corruption. And of the 443 individual matters, 299 required assistance or advice or assistance from ES, again up from last, sorry, sorry, while the remaining 144 matters were deemed to require formal assistance by ES, so up from 95 last year. So, that's, these are matters of concern to us as an opposition, and so I'd be very interested to know what happened, what happened to the 25 complaints to the CCC, you know, were they matters where people were tried, were they convicted, or what's, what's the situation with it? What happened to the 144 matters formally investigated by Ethical Services? You know, what dollar amounts were involved? What's, what's the nature of these allegations, the nature of the behaviour that's been reported? And this is, it's quite a disturbing aspect of this report, and a matter that deserves a lot more detail than what is contained in the report. The, I refer back to the start of the report on page 10, the Lord Mayor's report, and there's a number of references in the, in the report about bushland acquisition, and the Lord Mayor's said that the accelerated bushland acquisition programme securing 700 hectares of, of essential Koala habitat between 2016 and July 2019. Now, as we know, the land at Mount Gravatta, Carrara and Nurean Street land was anything but essential Koala habitat. It was purchased to get the Deputy Mayor and Councillor Holland Park, Councillor Adams out of a pickle, and there was no scientific evidence that the land was Koala habitat. The land was cleared, there was no expert report ever obtained, and yet the Brisbane City Council spent the third highest amount that's ever been spent on purchasing some Koala habitat, $6,252,135 on this one piece of land. And if you look through the, through the bushland acquisition report, it's actually the most expensive piece of land in terms of cost per hectare that's ever been purchased under this scheme. And it's an absolute disgrace that it was done without any, any professional advice, without any professional report being obtained, and it was done just to avoid a development occurring in that area that had caused some embarrassment to the, to the Deputy Mayor. And it's an absolute disgrace. So if, the administration, we've, we've always said we support bushland, bushland acquisition for Koala habitat, but we do not support bushland acquisition where it's to stop a development occurring and where there's no expert advice that it was in fact any, any worthy Koala land. And we've, of course, inspected the file, and there's nothing in there, nothing in there, no experts report about, about that land as well. The, Lord Mayor refers to the number of suburban streets being resurfaced, but we all know this programme received reduced funding in the most recent budget, and the administration, of course, last year were caught out, they were included as many short streets as possible to artificially boost the numbers of streets in the financial year. The, on page 15 of the report, the medium-term performance snapshot under Programme One Transport for Brisbane claims that 190,000 residents now ride in a typical week, that's, I query that figure, I do query that figure, that's, the population of Brisbane's 1,231,605, so 190,000 cyclists a week would mean 15.43% of the total population of Brisbane, more than one in seven ride a cycle in a typical week. I, I query that, I ask where that information came from. Because, of course, the total population includes, includes a lot of people, that, you know, babies and elderly people living in nursing homes, et cetera, who I would thought in most cases wouldn't be capable of riding, riding a bike. So I'm very interested to know where that figure came from. The, the, on page 17, there's reference to data sets being available, and the idea, my understanding of the data sets were that someone was, could, could purchase the data sets off council and use those to set up a business and employ people, well and, well and good. But it just states the number of data sets that are now available, it doesn't say what, whether anyone had been acquired by anyone or used for anything. So I'd like some further information on that. Also on page 17, the Brisbane City Council claims credit for the 12% growth in international students. So this is, this is the typical claim from this administration. They claim credit for all sorts of things that they have, they have no funding for whatsoever. So the marketing section of UQ or QUT or Griffith or any of the other unis that operate in Brisbane had nothing to do with it, it was all BCC, when that's of course a load of rubbish. The, on page 32, this one intrigues me, it's intrigued me for some times, so I'll ask it again, I know I won't get an answer. This is the previous ENC committee members, Councillor Ryan Murphy, member of the ENC for five weeks and one day. Why did he, why did he resign? Why did he resign? Or was he sacked? And why was that the case? And it's an important matter for, when the history of council comes to be written, why did, why did Councillor Murphy resign after such a short period of time? I invite Councillor Murphy to contribute to this historical record today. And the BCC management team, Madam Chair, look, I don't want to be accused of being an intellectual snob, but I, I think the, the really, the degree you look for in qualifications for people in senior management positions is an MBA. And with Mr Salvati leaving the, leaving council's employment, the, the senior executive management team at Brisbane City Council has zero MBAs.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
This line of debate on the annual report is appalling. The graduate degrees of our senior management that do such an outstanding job in this place should not be the point of discussion.
Again, Deputy Mayor, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to pull you up there because, as I've said many times before, please do not use point of orders to debate. However, there is a clear rule in the meeting's local law that we are meant to avoid negative reflections on officers. So, no, no, and that's, it's not my rule, that's the, that's in the law, Councillor Griffiths. So, Councillor Cumming, can you please be exceptionally mindful of that rule while you make these comments?
I will, you can rest assured I won't be criticising any senior officers. The, the final, financial ratios on page 58 and 59 are quite detailed, but they gave no targets. We've seen other ratios produced in council's reports which give a, a target, what the target is for the particular ratio. There's no targets in this, this large list of financial ratios. But there are some concerns because it's, and the news is all bad on the issue of debt. The, the debt servicing and redemption cost over total revenue goes up seven years in a row, starting at 7.2% in 2018-19 through to 12.8% in 2024-25. Net debt per capita goes up five years in a row, peaking at $2,436 for every man, woman, and child in Brisbane in 2023-24. Now, Brisbane City Council was debt-free not that many years ago, but under the LNP administration, debt has blown out enormously because of their poor financial administration. The other ratio which is getting worse and staying bad is the net financial liabilities ratio, which is total liabilities less current assets over total operating revenue. It jumps from 92.2% for 2018-19 to a peak of 268.8% in 2021-22, and stays over 200% until 27-28. The, on page 66, the corporate plan scorecard on page 66 has a medium-term five-year objective in relation to public transport. The objective is that by 2021, bus patronage will increase to more than 90 million trips per year. Now, last year, last week's reports provided the council showed that the, the annual...
Councillor Cumming, your time has expired.
Mr Chair.
Chair, I move for an extension. A second. An extension of time has been moved by Councillor Cassidy, seconded by Councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, chamber. The report last week said that the current bus patronage was 79 million, so for the objective to be able to be met would require an extra 11 million bus passengers in the next two years. That's a 13.9% increase. That won't happen, Madam Chair. This, under this administration, bus patronage has gone nowhere, and it's not going to jump by 13.9% in the next two years. This, bus patronage in Brisbane has been going nowhere for a long, long time. Now, the similar thing can be said about ferry patronage. The objective for 2021 is for ferry services is 7 million passengers, and last week's report said current patronage was 5 million. So an increase of 40% would be needed. Again, this is pie in the sky and highly unlikely to occur. And the failure to achieve these objectives is regrettable. There's very few of these objectives which are actually in a form where it's a number that you can actually do a comparison to, and of course, when you do, when they do quote a number, then they, the actual performance doesn't measure up at all. On page 67, the references made to the Moreton Bay cycleway, Elinora Park, to Exports Street, Winham, this is a local thing, and I appreciate that that work was done, it was very good. I did have some concerns about local neighbours telling me it was actually dug up three times before it was finished, but anyhow. Page 68 refers to active school travel. Now, there's a lot of reference to active school travel in this report, but the administration cut the funding to active school travel in this year's budget by several hundred thousand dollars. It shows what they really think of it. And as we said at, at the time of the council budget, Labour would reinstate funding and increase it on top of that. On page 69 refers to purchase of 60 buses, very good, but then 59 were retired, so the net increase wasn't actually stated as being one bus. And we are also waiting to see the design for the proposed metro buses, and it'll be interesting to see how long that takes. References made to, on page 71, council's drafting planning scheme requirements for new developments to include end-of-trip facilities and bike parking. Now, this is something that's way overdue. The administration's had 11 years to do something about that, and it's very disappointing that they still haven't got that finally into the, into the city plan. The, page 149 is a matter we've got grave concerns about in that there's reference to the savings in paper from E rates. Now, Madam Chair, the savings of paper.
Sorry, sorry, Councillor Cumming.
Madam Chair, sorry.
I don't mind, I don't mind.
Madam Chair, it's been, it was such a long time, I might really apologise officially.
No worries.
You're far better than the previous chair. This, this is an administration which puts 20 items a year within letterboxes and send out hundreds of millions, no, I think 9.5 million items we calculated last year, and we've just got to say that it just shows the amount of tonnes of waste going to landfill from, from propaganda from this administration, using ratepayers, funny to peddle their views is, as a disgrace. And we've done a rough calculation, the amount of water that would be used to produce all the paper that gets thrown out, all the bits of paper with the councillor's rena's face on is some 1,370,850 litres of, of water. We could have a lot more water in the dams if it wasn't for this, this propaganda being peddled. The, so we're very concerned about the, the waste occurring and the hypocrisy of this administration claiming credit for E rates when they, they pump out so much, pump out so much propaganda themselves.
Further speakers, Councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the annual report. Unlike the previous speaker, I think that the annual report is actually a fantastic document full of great projects that we have been able to deliver on behalf of the people of Brisbane. And I particularly would like to thank the Lord Mayor because I think he has done an outstanding job and will do an outstanding job in the years ahead to, to continue to deliver these sorts of projects for the people of Brisbane. So there's many, many achievements, many initiatives that we've been able to deliver, particularly through Programme Two. And in particular, we have delivered a whole range of safety improvements. There are now certainly a lot of schools that have embraced, embraced the opportunity to work with us on doing a traffic management plan. When you look at the fact that there are more than 300 schools in the city of Brisbane, we are continuing to deliver in accordance with the Parking Task Force Recommendation 31, to work to schools to do a whole range of projects to improve safety in and around our schools. So if you look at the annual report, pages 75 and 78, TMPs, school safety and SAMs, we have worked with 189 schools on creating TMPs. And I'd like to thank the councillors who have been out there, and it's been councillors from all across the chamber who have been out there working with their local schools and encouraging their, like, their local schools to take up this opportunity to work with council. And I think there's going to be some very significant benefits as a result of that, that undertaking. So in the 18-19 financial year, 63 schools have completed their TMPs, taking a total of 173 schools who now have completed TMPs. And I know there were some people who were very sceptical about whether or not schools would take up this opportunity, and I'd like to say to those sceptics, you have been proven wrong. We are certainly seeing very strong evidence that people are very keen to work with us on this particular initiative. We've also installed the award-winning, I'd like to just say that again, the award-winning SAMs. They've got 32 additional locations, and certainly I think this has been a really fantastic achievement. Thank you to the officers who have been instrumental in working with us on this particular programme. And we've got evidence from the data that's been collected showing that the average speed reduction of 8.4 kilometres per hour from vehicles travelling above the speed limit since the project was launched in 2031. So a fantastic project, and certainly we're getting very, very good feedback from the community. A lot of the community members talk to us, and they talk about SAM like it is a real person, which was partly the objective to make people really personalise the responsibility of driving safely. Instead of being punitive, we believe it's important to be encouraging and get people to take on, take on the opportunity to drive safely, to protect themselves and their families. And we're certainly seeing very strong support of that programme, and we've had more than 293 million vehicles that have driven past these signs. So there is a very strong, very strong recognition factor as part of that work that we undertook. With pages 77 and 78, we've got the major intersection upgrades and black spot funding. So we've got Parakeet and Partridge Streets at Enala, so we've got an intersection that carries about 10,000 vehicles per day. Web crash data tells us there are, were five crashes from 2011 to 2018 that resulted in either hospitalisation, medical treatment, or minor injury. The majority of those incidents were due to drivers failing to obey the give-way signs on Parakeet Street, as I would believe the local council would be well aware. The upgrade has made a significant improvement to safety with that new roundabout to control traffic flow, improve visibility, new traffic islands, curb build-outs and curb ramps to improve pedestrian safety, which was completed in April of this year. Again, investment in the suburbs of our beautiful city. We've also got a major intersection upgrade, so Progress Road. This was jointly funded, and it's fantastic to see the federal government prepared to work with council to support our projects. This was the final of four stages to upgrade Progress Road between the Ipswich Motorway and Pointe Sieda Street. Construction started in December 2017, completed in March 2019. It carries, Progress Road carries approximately 15,000 vehicles per day, and it is particularly a primary freight access route with B-doubles travelling along it, about 14% of that daily traffic, heavy vehicle movement, so a significant corridor for heavy vehicles. So traffic model predict, modelling predicted that by 2031, traffic, traffic volumes would have exceeded the single-lane capacity between Boundary Road and the Centenary Motorway. So we've been able to widen the existing road to five lanes. We've put in culverts at Bullockhead Creek, put them in, sorry, we've replaced culverts with a new bridge to reduce flooding. So a big issue down there at Progress Road was the flooding impact, so we've been able to make significant upgrades. We've also got on-road cycle lanes in both directions. We put LED street lighting, which we are doing for every project when we're doing our road projects. We're moving to the LED format with a 60% reduction in, in, in the requirement for electricity for those. We've also put a 12-spaced car park in the Progress Road Park, and we've put a three-metre-wide shared pathway on the northern side and 1.8-metre-wide pedestrian path on the southern side of Progress Road. So our road projects aren't just about cars, they're also about cycles, and they're also about pedestrian. about pedestrians, all ranges of mobility are encapsulated in the work that we do. And also, we've been continuing to deliver on other recommendations for, for the, from the Lord Mayor's Independent Parking Task Force, we've got the, um, streamlined online system for parking permits, as well as extending the permit for carers and healthcare workers, as well as offering a discount for eligible pensioners. We've also continued the Streets of Remembrance, uh, initiative that came from a member of the community to the Lord Mayor, uh, which honours our service men and women with seven hundred and forty-eight signs erected across two hundred and twenty-three streets in our beautiful city. So this unique initiative, uh, is very much about honouring those who have served, uh, and honouring those who have, uh, ma, given so much to protect and preserve the things that we value in our city, uh, in our state and in our country. We've also got the smart poles, uh, page eighty-three, it talks about the rollout of the smart poles across twenty locations, uh, will be providing real-time information, including a number of cyclists, pedestrians, to help us improve our operation and efficiency, and I'd like to, uh, wrap up with what I think is one of the most fabulous projects of all time, uh, which is the upgrade to Telegraph Road Stage Two. Uh, the report really highlights the delivery of Stage Two, which has had an enormous benefit for, uh, my local community as well as those, uh, residents who reside in the Deegan, Deegan Ward. Uh, it is very much about tackling congestion, it's significant safety improvements, uh, the improvement to flood, um, issues that impact significantly on Limkey Road, uh, and is about completing that whole corridor from, uh, basically the open level crossing all the way through to the on-ramps of, uh, of the gateway. So it's something that I think is a tremendous success. Uh, it also has included, um, new glider poles, fauna underpasses, and we've also planted more than fourteen thousand five hundred new trees and shrubs and sixty-eight thousand ground cover plants, uh, to support the squirrel glider population, which is a very important part of our natural environment. There are a whole range of great projects that are encapsulated within this particular annual report, I thank the Lord Mayor, I thank, uh, all of the officers that have worked so hard to make sure we continue to build a fantastic city and make sure that we can move safely, make sure that we can move, uh, easily, and support all modes of mobility instead of, uh, tra, treating a road as if it is just for a vehicle, a road services, serves so many more people and so many more, um, modes of transport than just vehicles. Thank you very much, Mister Chair.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and I rise to speak on item A and B as well, and I have to say I concur with Councillor Cooper that this is a strong financial report and an annual report that everybody in the Srirna administration is very, very proud of, and would be more than happy to tell the rest of Brisbane about the wonderful job that we are doing as well. To start with item A, I have to say well done to, uh, the CFO and the team within finance, led ably by councillor, um, Allen, around showing the auditor general that we have balanced and accurate recordings when it comes to our financial statements. I think the most important thing to see there is that this is including our ten-year long-term sustainability when it comes to our finances in Brisbane as well, and so when you're talking about long-term financial sustainability, what is definitely loaded into those numbers that the auditor general is quite comfortable with is the Brisbane Metro, and that is more than eight hundred and seventy million dollars of funding allocated over the next four years for Metro, a project ranked the nation's highest priority projects by Infrastructure Australia. The federal government have committed three hundred million dollars to the project and our funding remaining six hundred and forty-four thousand. Once built, the Brisbane Metro is one of council's main priorities, we'd like to see those, uh, those, uh, services extended further north and further east of Brisbane to directly service more Brisbane residents, and we will be able to do that because we have long-term sustainability in our financial outlook. If the state won't fund the services on the north side of Brisbane, council will do what it can to help, but we know that residents across Brisbane are excited about the prospect of getting home quicker and safer, which is why we are building the Metro. The state government says Brisbane will have an additional three hundred and eighty-six thousand new residents by twenty forty-one, we need to be able to move them around without creating gridlock, and that is why we want to get on with the business of taking two hundred buses per hour from slow inner-city movements and allowing more bus services in the suburbs. Every day, about a hundred and seventy thousand employees, visitors and students travel to or through the city centre, mostly by public transport, and this is predicted to climb to a quarter of a million by twenty thirty-one. I thank again the financial team that we have in council to make sure that we are keeping this budget balance and our long-term financial sustainability will support this infrastructure, um, as we go forward through the years. On top of that, with Programme Run, boats, bikes and buses, we are very pleased that again we're delivering major projects and initiatives for the city in this space, safe and efficient travel options that will get people home quicker and safer. Our major investment over the last four years, and particularly with some conclusion in the last financial years we saw on this annual report, is our Better Bike Ways for Brisbane Project, a hundred million dollars over this four-year term, and in the last financial year, as stated in the report, the completion of Kangaroo Point Bike Way, Stages One A and One B, land bridge improvements, the land bridge improvements, um, the Morton Bay cycleway at Eleanor Park to Export Street and Winham, and we also opened the Woolangaba Bike Way not long after the financial year completed as well. We are increasing our Cycling Brisbane membership by over four thousand and taking it to twenty-two thousand members in the last financial year, and that is a ringing endorsement for the programme that we are delivering in council to make sure that people are getting their foot off the pedal in the car and onto the pedal on the bike. We continue to deliver our most modern bus fleets in the country, retiring fifty-nine old buses and adding sixty rigid equivalents, fully air-conditioned and CCTV-monitored buses. Our buses carry more than seventy-nine million passengers, over three million bus services last year. On top of that, we did communications out Centenary suburbs to expand those who needed requirements with, um, personal public transport, we completed the New Farm Ferry Terminal, we commenced the Guyat Park Ferry Terminal, we started the refurbishment of South Bank Three Ferry Terminal, and we started the design works for Howard Smith Walls. The construction on the first double-decker City Cat has begun, and we're making good progress on that, and of course, we're looking forward to the detailed design this year of the Kangaroo Point Bridge. As well as boats, buses and bikes, I also have business, and I am very proud of Programme Seven and the world-class opportunity that people get for doing business with Brisbane. We're committed to backing our small businesses with more support in the suburbs, including events, workshops, small business liaison offices, twenty-four-seven business hotlines, and some major deliverables in the last financial year, the Lord Mayor's suburban, uh, business forums, eight of those, four Lord Mayor's Business Excellent Workshops, more than four thousand seven hundred people have now attended these forums since they began in twenty-twelve. We're going a long way to getting those startups and those scale-ups more educated in how we can help them and how we can help them expand their business, whether it is across the city, across the state, nation, or even globally as well. Our small business liaison offices held more than three hundred and fifty one-on-one sessions last year, twenty-five social entrepreneurs were sponsored through our Social Enterprise programme, and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in grants for our global entrepreneur and trailblazer grants proudly supported by the Lord Mayor through this budget. We sponsored four youth employability programmes which are extremely successful for seventeen-to-twenty-five-year-olds, helping them find employment or just learning how to write their CV network and make themselves more employable as well. We are nurturing our innovative and supporting our emerging businesses with digital programmes, startup spaces and events as well. Eight hundred children learnt to code through our Code-a-Dojo programme, which is now just seen as something that is standard across our libraries, but it's all about supporting the STEM education through our primary schools with that extracurricular work in a library, whether it's in the afternoon or on a Saturday as well. Brisbane Innovate last year saw more than three hundred members of industry, academia and the community come together to solve city solutions relating to waste, neighbourhoods and socialisation, social isolation. We did release more than seventy new data sets with two hundred and four data sets now available on the Open Data Portal, and I'm sorry councillor Cumming, but we don't keep track of actually who accesses those because they are open and they are free, and you can use whatever bit, whenever bit you like, and we're hoping with our new low rent system, not to steal your thunder councillor Allen, with the internet of things out there, the possibilities are endless. We've seen a twelve percent growth in the international student market and facilitated more than fifty events through the Fortitude Valley malls, the Lunar New Year and Chinese Moon Festival, the Valley Fiesta Programme, and more than a thousand events and two and a half thousand performances in Queen Street Moles, malls. Mister Chair, from bikeways to business events, we are ensuring our city is prepared for the future growth. I am very proud of the annual report and what it shows we have delivered in the last twelve months, and look forward to continuing to working in this area to ensure that the Brisbane of tomorrow is better than the Brisbane of today.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Chair, I rise to speak on items A, B and C, and first off, the, uh, audited, um, annual financial statements and, uh, the auditor general's audit report. Um, the purpose of the submission today is to present the final signed annual financial statements that have been audited by the Queensland Audit Office, and, uh, as noted in the independent auditor's report, the Queensland Audit Office has stated that the financial report gives a true and fair view of the council and group's financial position and complies with the City of Brisbane Act two thousand and ten. This is very clear evidence and continues to support the strong financial management of this council. Following the, uh, presentation of the financial statements, the Queensland Audit Office will issue a final management letter, which they do annually, and we would expect, um, that we will receive an unmodified report. Uh, last year, council had five minor matters raised that the QAO identified, and throughout the year, council has worked closely with the QAO to address these, and as councillor Adams pointed out, we work very, very closely with the QAO, they attend our audit committee meetings and the relationship is a long-term and very collaborative one. This year, the QAO have only identified one key audit matter in this report, and council will work with them to, uh, to address that, and the item that was raised is, uh, relates to the value of our infrastructure assets for replacement. So it doesn't have a, an impact on the way we operate the business, um, and clearly it is more of an accounting matter than it is an operational matter. So, as I mentioned, this is not material to the operations of council, but certainly we will work with the QAO to, um, progress any suggestions they might have. Um, the audit committee, which as I mentioned, meets regularly and has an excellent relationship with QAO, uh, is well aware of the issues they raise, and they are another set of eyes that ensures that any issues the QAO raises are addressed by council. So, um, the financial statements, I'll, I'll leave them as is, they, um, present a very good picture for this council, uh, the financial position is very, very strong, it allows us to do what we need to do to continue to invest in this growing city, and the financial management of this council is further supported by the independent view of the QAO. Moving on to the annual report, there seems to have been a lot more debate about this in the chamber this afternoon than the financial statements, and to, um, support what previous speakers have said, this just highlights what a terrific job this council is doing across the city and the vast array of programmes and projects that are being delivered. Um, the city is a, a growing city, it's a city that's hungry for infrastructure, and we're continuing to deliver that. So in the context of the annual report, um, it's an award-winning report, it's transparent, it's extensive, it's clear, the residents of this city can pick it up and get a good sense of what we're delivering for them year in and year out. We've, uh, won a number of Australasian reporting awards, and certainly won awards in the last two years for the quality of our annual report. Um, it is an extensive report, um, three hundred odd pages, but if you want to tell the full story, you've got to do it, uh, accurately. So as the report indicates, um, we manage a vast array of projects, um, every year our budget provides services to more than one million people, we call Brisbane their home, eight hundred thousand employees and nine million visitors. We provide the necessary infrastructure to support our residents, workers and visitors, including forty-eight hundred kilometres of footpath, more than six thousand bus stops and more than twenty-one hundred parks. This annual report not only outlines our achievements in delivering on the two thousand and eighteen nineteen budget, but also the corporate plan and everything else that council does to support the people of Brisbane. In my portfolio in particular, city governance, this is very much, I guess, a behind-the-scenes part of council, and, um, the city governance team is responsible for financial management, it's responsible for the council and committee staff, it's responsible for the support of council's, uh, correspondence, procurement, ICT, and also supporting meetings such as this. So it's a, um, it's an important programme that perhaps goes a little bit unheralded. Um, in the context of our, um, performance in, um, the, uh, previous year, we've once again continued to, uh, have a very strong, uh, credit outlook, uh, the, we're rated strong with a neutral, uh, outlook, and this has been the position for the last seven years. Um, I also wanted to touch briefly on a couple of points that councillor Cumming raised about the annual report, and, uh, in particular, his point on the ethical standards section on page one hundred and eighty-three. This is in the annual report every year, and this council, um, takes the, um, assessment of complaints very, very seriously. We are a large organisation, we hold ourselves to very high standards, and when complaints are made, we take them seriously, we investigate them closely, and then if necessary, we'll report them to the appropriate authorities. So in the context of the, uh, the, the section in the report today, the, um, twenty-five that were referred to the triple C, a, a number of them actually came back to us for further investigation, but nine of them were identified as, um, matters for disciplinary action, so out of a total of north of four hundred, that's a pretty good outcome, and I do think that this is just evidence of our desire to make sure that complaints are identified and investigated. Moving on to page fifty-nine, where he made some comments on the, on the ratios and suggested that, um, you know, the, the changes in some of the debt ratios were a function of poor financial management, it couldn't be further from the truth. Um, I don't know how many times I have to mention to councillor Cumming that there have been some, uh, accounting changes that are impacting our, uh, our liability levels and they flow through to some of the ratios, this must be about the third time I've mentioned this in the chamber, we've had presentations in the chamber here, but councillor Cumming continues...
Councillors, councillors, councillor Allen, can, can councillor Allen please be heard in silence? Thank you.
So councillor Cumming continues to sort of miss this point, but anyway, for the record, a, a number of the ratio changes are a direct result of the increase in those liabilities which are a function of the accounting standard changes, and not to mention, as a growing city, we do need to, uh, to borrow to support key infrastructure, and if these guys believe that's a problem, tell me how you'd build it, tell me how you'd build it. Anyway, enough on that. Moving on to the audit report, this comes to, uh, council on a regular basis, and this is a requirement of the City of Brisbane Regulations, um, the audit committees are attended by the CEO, the CFO, and as I mentioned earlier, the Queensland Audit Office, so it is a key part of our risk management process, it's a very thorough process, it's got extremely capable people in there, and the report is there for the chamber to see, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, Lord Mayor. I'll now put, uh, item A, all those in, in favour of item A, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Now, item B and C, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And to the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Please.
Question called by councillor Cumming, councillor Cassidy, ayes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour and six against.
The ayes have it, please return to your chairs. The ayes have it. Please return to your chairs. Councillors, the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, twenty-seventh of August, twenty nineteen, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Davis. That the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of August, twenty nineteen, be adopted. Is there any debate, deputy mayor?
Before I get to the committee report from last week, I'd just like to refer back to the incident that was raised by councillor Cassidy around the driver who had stolen personal items in that horrific attack last week. My understanding was the driver's stolen personal items did add to the value of $300. The issue was raised with his managers, but he was told that our insurance did not cover these items, which is correct for personal items in this case. However, this issue was never escalated and definitely not raised with any manager above depot level or indeed raised with my office as well. So yet again, we have a situation, unfortunately, where councillor Cassidy was more interested in letting the people who are sitting in front of me, the media, know about this, rather than the concerns of councillor Adams, could you help the bus driver? Because I assure you right now, I will say it again, this attack was unprovoked and absolutely horrific and no driver or frontline service should be feeling unsafe when they go to work. It was absolutely not acceptable. And the person at the time who grabbed the till, obviously grabbed things that were in the till that also belonged to the bus driver. And I can say unequivocally that I am more than happy to organise the reimbursement of these personal effects. It was nice to finally be asked, councillor Cassidy. To the report last week, we did a report on the Elevate Plus Social Enterprise Accelerator Programme. When it comes to this programme, we are very proud of the way that we have... This administration is dedicated to supporting social enterprise. And in 2016, we committed to two hundred thousand over four years to support the development of new and emerging social enterprises. Elevate Plus has been running that for the last two years, with increasing numbers of participants here as well. It's a twenty-week intensive learning programme involving online modules, workshops, mentoring and networking. And delivered annually, it includes personal and group mentoring sessions and really specific one-on-one information for participants to learn how to scale and grow their businesses as well. It all culminates in a pitch night, so even though I wasn't at the committee last week, I was there on the pitch night and the exposure for the participants to investors and just to the general community was so exciting. Their pitches were fantastic, their partners and their funders were exciting. It was an absolutely brilliant night and truly awe-inspiring to see some of the ideas that people come up with, to make sure that looking after the triple bottom line when it comes to their enterprises as well. So every year, we will have the citywide application process, again, making sure that we can cultivate that diversity in our business enterprise. A great aspect of what Tom Allen did with this year was the extra work that he did with some indigenous groups specifically tailored to them as well. So some of the groups that we saw that got some help, they were looking at things like helping special needs walk through our beautiful forest trails or go out kayaking or get on the river. There was native bees, there was lady sanitary products. The diversity is amazing. There was books for people that needed to read. There was sixteen, I can't remember them all off the top of my head, but they were absolutely amazing. The outcomes means that we have now launched more than thirty Brisbane social enterprises through this programme. We've secured $650,000 worth of funding investment for these companies over the last few years. And Impact Boom have been doing really well with their partnerships with alumni businesses, corporates, government and community organisations. So look forward to the next year of intake as we go forward. I thank Tom Allen for doing the presentation. I also wish him all of the luck with the Lord Mayor's Global Entrepreneurs Grant, which is supporting him to head to Ethiopia in the next couple of months to actually bid for the World Social Enterprise Conference that we want to bring back here in Brisbane. Because I said on the night, and I'll say it again now, we are already the social enterprise capital of Australia and we just want to expand that. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put the resolution. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marsh. That this council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of fifteen minutes, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you councillors, I draw to your attention the Infrastructure Committee report. Councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 27th of August 2019 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by Councillor Cooper, seconded by Councillor Huang for the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 27th of August 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much Mr Chair. Mr Chair, we had a presentation about Move Safe at committee last week. We talked about a couple of particular issues. We talked about the village precinct speed reductions which was outcome one and outcome nine which is the pedestrian education campaign for the linguistically diverse community at Sunnybank. So the purpose of the presentation was really to share with the committee the progress of the work that the officers have been undertaking with respect to Move Safe Brisbane, the pedestrian safety review. And I'd really particularly like to take a moment to commend the officers for the work that they have undertaken. It has been a very swift response to the particular outcomes that we've got and the officers have I think done an outstanding job of getting on with implementing changes to make sure that our city is as safe as possible for everyone. And in particular, I'd like to again stress the point that every single one of us is a pedestrian. So the improvements we make benefit each and every member of our city, residents and visitors alike. So the final Move Safe report was presented to council in December of last year. There were 31 project recommendations and there were nine outcomes. There were six speed limit reduction recommendations proposed as part of outcome one. They included Flinders Parade, Sandgate, Station Road, Indrapilly, Bow Desert Road, Maruka, Riding Road, Hawthorn, Vulture Street, West End and Lutwich Road, Lutwich. So for the speed limit reviews, the process of assessment has to be undertaken in accordance with the requirements of the state government's Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. There is a criteria, this is criteria based, so the, for example, locations such as foreshores, shared zones, local access streets or high active transport user areas or hatuas as they are called. There's also risk assessment undertaken with the speed limit which considers factors such as crash risks, infrastructure risks, environment and road function. And there's also the speed data, speed limit which analyzes current speed data for the section of the road using traffic surveys. So generally that is undertaken by the tube method. As discussed at committee last week, speed limit reviews do not presuppose an outcome. They don't have a target speed limit at the beginning of the process. Instead, the review is about finding out what the speed limit should be and includes looking at the road geometry as well as the QPS web crash data. So we have undertaken work across these specific locations. For Flinders Parade at Sandgate, the posted speed will be reduced from 50 kilometres per hour to 40 kilometres per hour. That will occur on Thursday the 5th of September between Second Avenue and Ninth Avenue, so that's a 960 metre section. The reviews also identified this section of road is appropriate for hatua signage which will also be installed with the number of people moving backward and forward between the foreshore and of course the fish and chip shops and all the other activities down there with the pool and all those other facilities. The Station Road, Indrapilly, the posted, the posted speed will be reduced tomorrow from 50 kilometres per hour to 40 kilometres per hour in a 530 metre, metre section between Coonan Street and Musgrave Road. In Bow Desert Road, Maruka, the posted speed will be reduced from tomorrow from 60 kilometres per hour to 50 kilometres per hour with a 580 section between Dora Street and Durack Road. And in Riding Road, Hawthorn, the posted speed limit will be reduced on Thursday from 60 kilometres per hour to 50 kilometres per hour with the longest section of all being a two kilometre section between Litton Road and Winham Road. We undertook, well officers undertook a speed limit review for Vulture Street between Montague Road and Franklin Street which include concluded a 50 kilometres per, sorry, a 50 kilometre per hour speed limit was appropriate. There was also a speed limit review conducted for Lutwich Road between Felix Street and High Street at Lutwich which concluded the current 60 kilometre per hour speed limit, excuse me, was supported. To ensure motorists have advanced notification, VMS signs were installed last week and we also at Infrastructure Committee last week received a presentation about our first ever dedicated pedestrian education campaign for a linguistically diverse community with the Sunnybank Pedestrian Safety Campaign which was held during Road Safety Week. Council officers have done a tremendous job working with Queensland Police Service to design a behavioural change, an enforcement approach to improve pedestrian safety while also in creating materials to culturally and linguistically diverse communities. We elected for Sunnybank to undertake this first pedestrian safety campaign due to the high number of crashes involving pedestrians in this vicinity with a total of 17 pedestrian crashes over a five-year period from August 2013 to July 2018. And certainly there were statistics that backed up the nomination of this location. The objective of the campaign was to increase road safety awareness and was held in Sunnybank at Sunnybank Plaza. Thank you to Sunnybank Plaza for hosting us, that was very kind of them. It is certainly a community with a predominantly Chinese community reflecting that over 50% of households speak a language other than English at home. The majority of non-English speaking households speak either Mandarin or Cantonese as well with over, sorry, with around 8,697 people living in Sunnybank with a median age of 32. So a relatively young age and certainly with a very strong background of non, of cold, rather. We undertook three engagement sessions on August 29, 31 and September 1st where the local community provided feedback on pedestrian safety. We had more than 300 residents who participated in the quiz and approximately 2,000 visited the session. So really strong uptake for the campaign. All materials were translated into traditional and simplified Chinese to be distributed with Mandarin speaking TPO officers along with police liaison officers who represented TMR and QPS as part of the Road Safety Week. We also saw at committee last week the award that council's Move Safe Pedestrian Safety Review received earlier that week as part of the 2019 Queensland Road Safety Awards. It was held, the event was held on the 26th of August, first day of Road Safety Week and recognised road safety champions across Queensland. So well done to the officers who I think have done an outstanding job in promoting pedestrian safety. The campaign that we have undertaken I think has been a fantastic success and I note that Councillor Huang said to me that he really felt that there was good attendance and certainly good engagement from the community as a part of that particular process. So we'll be looking to see whether other locations would be suitable to undertake this campaign in future. There are two petitions that were also dealt with as part of the committee last week and I'm happy to respond to any commentary with respect to those. Thank you Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks Ms Chair and yes, that's, there was a very interesting presentation last week particularly with the Move Safe. I know many councillors have been interested in this particular program that council is pursuing and certainly I have. One of the areas that the councillor just spoke about was Bow Desert Road at Maruka. Makes a lot of sense to do Move Safe in an area that has so many elderly people and a lot of traffic. And certainly in, in Maruka it's actually about reducing the traffic speed to 50k or confirming that it will be 50k. The advice I've had from officers is that largely they've found that the traffic that does travel through that particular shopping centre for most of the times does travel at that speed. So this reinforces that speed and then implements it in other times of the day when, when they might, people might travel a bit faster. So I, I support this program. I think it's a very valuable program for the residents of Brisbane. It helps make our centres and parts of the city more vibrant and safer and it's a good program with its implementation. Second thing I'd like to talk about is there, there was a petition. It's actually a petition that I'm familiar with but councillor Johnston brought it and that was requesting council improve pedestrian safety on High Road near the intersection of Canstale Street, Yoronga. This has been an ongoing issue for many years and the issue particularly relates to a very busy road and a bend in the road. There's been a lot of development around this particular road, Hyde Road, where council has allowed the construction of a very large retirement village. Many of the people who use the retirement village and use the dog park and use the shops in the area want to cross this road safely. I know councillor Johnson has been pushing for lights at this particular site and there's been a bit of tussle backwards and forwards, but from my perspective I think that the, the build-out and refuge is a good starting point to at least make some improvements at this particular location. I know councillor Johnston will continue to fight for lights but it's a good starting point that we can work with and residents will get some benefit while, while we work through the issue of, while the issue of lights at this location is, is further dealt with. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Cooper.
Thank you very much Mr Chair. Just a quick sum up with that response and I thank councillor Griffiths for his support of Move Safe. I really respect that he has treated it as an opportunity for us all to work together to improve the safety of all residents. So thank you very much for his support, it's very much appreciated. Just with respect to that particular petition, I'd just like to say that the officers I think have done a really great job in looking and thinking a little bit differently about how we can try and improve the safety. So there was a petition from residents, particularly residents from the village, retirement village in a location very close proximity to this area. They particularly had put forward three proposals to council and what we have been able to accommodate by reviewing the speed along Hyde Road, by, by doing that investigation to see if we can reduce the speed. It allows council to put in place a, essentially a staggered zebra crossing. So I think that really shows that the officers are keen to try and improve the safety as much as they can possibly can. So it's not just a pedestrian refuge, it's also a pedestrian refuge with a zebra crossing to improve the crossing ability for local residents. And I think that this is a really good way that we've been able to review and make some changes to accommodate as much as we possibly can the, the request of the officers. So thank you very much to the officers. I think we've also got, of course the Lord Mayor has allocated, and thank you very much to the Lord Mayor for that allocation of $150,000 in the 20, I'm sorry, 1920 budget for the design and construction of that staggered pedestrian zebra crossing in this location. It's expected to be completed by the end of June 2020, weather permitting, and I think it is a great outcome for the community and I really do thank them for continuing to, continuing to work with, with council to resolve the issue as much as we possibly can. Thank you Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Cooper. I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the city planning report please.
Thanks Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 27th of August 2019 be adopted.
Seconded Mr Chairman.
It's been moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Toomey. The report of the City Planning Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 27th of August 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much Mr Chairman. There was only one item on the agenda for the City Planning Committee meeting last week and that was a development application at 45 and 47 Hayward Street, Stafford. This is for the largest 24-hour specialist veterinary facility in the city of Brisbane, Mr Chairman. So a little bit different from the development application the week before which was for a specialist training facility to support the meat and livestock industry in the city of Brisbane. It is for two sites, sorry, it's for one site where there is two current buildings, Mr Chairman. Those buildings will be demolished as part of this application to build the new animal hospital. It is a single level building of roughly 1,000 square metres in gross floor area and is about eight metres in height at its highest point, Mr Chairman. There is a garden area for animals to be exercise which will be acoustically screened. Its hours of operation, as I said, are 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm reliably informed by the council officers that to use or access this facility for the specialist services you actually need a referral from your vet for your pet. It predominantly will be treating dogs and cats, Mr Chairman, but that's not precluding in those after hour circumstances where you need an emergency vet for any of our beloved pets, you would be able to use this facility, Mr Chairman. It has 44 car spaces, 20 of those are allocated to customers, 24 for staff. It is seven days a week I should say as well. It has access from Two Streets, so from Tannery Lane and Hayward Street as well, Mr Chairman. The pedestrian entrance though comes off Hayward Street to minimise the impact on the closest neighbour which is roughly 100 metres away, Mr Chairman. It has also roughly got 50, sorry, 17% of the side area for landscaping. The council committee, sorry, the council officers assess this application and have issued a conditions package. The committee went through the presentation by the councils, council officers last week where they identified and addressed a number of items that were of concern initially to council. We've been able to work with the applicant and we've resolved a lot of those, Mr Chairman, and it is here today for full council approval to support this facility. As I said, this is the largest specialty veterinary care facility that will be built As I said, this is the largest specialty veterinary care facility that will be built in the city of Brisbane. I already have a similar facility at Seventeen Mile Rocks, Mr Chairman, which is a twenty-four hour emergency vet facility. And I know that it gives some peace of mind to residents in those southwestern suburbs that if after hours something happens to a cat or a dog or one of their pets, that there is these type of facilities well located in our city so that they can access the, the services there to make sure that their pets are taken care of. And I commend the, the report to the council chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I also rise to speak on item A of the report and particularly the presentation that was presented us in committee. Mr Chairman, as you are probably wearing councillor Hammond aware, this is a replacement facility, new digs so to speak, for Queensland Veterinary Services, which are currently placed on Appleby Road at Stafford. I myself, being a dog owner, have been to the Appleby site quite a number of times, particularly for, for my animal and being able to have the security of mind that you can access twenty-four hour services, veterinary services after a referral, it's a godsend. But in the presentation, we also learnt, Mr Chair, that there are a number of services that this facility will provide and, and some of them will ring true. There's ophthalmology, oncology, dentistry, cardiology, but probably the most significant one that I found in the presentation was the imaging services. And it's the imaging services that support all the other services that this facility will provide. The current site does not have that space for the imaging services. And this will be a distinct addition to the services provided to animals on the, on the north side of Brisbane. But the other thing, Mr Chair, that also greatly pleased me to hear was that they're having an exercise yard. Now, for anybody who has had anything to do with vet services, the guide dog community replace hips these days and they do it quite regularly. But part of the hip replacement for our guide dogs requires some remediation. And having the facilities close by that the vets and the nurses can monitor the guide dog's condition is, is essential. One other aspect of this facility that rang true to me was its, its location. So nearby, Mr Chairman, as you know, we have Ingrah Barracks. There are a number of service dogs at the Ingrah Barracks. Many of those dogs are deployed overseas and they do come back, some of them with, with injuries. And the, the current wall of honour at Appleby Street rings true to that. But we also have other dogs in our community that are also service dogs that are used on a daily basis for the functioning of our community. And some of those dogs that, that will benefit from a service like this are custom dogs, police dogs, the air force dogs, and also our own bat dogs that we have in council. Those dogs, we invest a lot of time into training and providing them with the best veterinary care possible during their working life and afterward is essential. So, Mr Chairman, I thoroughly endorse this recommendation and I would call on the chamber to support it. It's a very rare thing to see as a community grows that we place a lot of care in our animals and the value that they bring to our lives. And as a community, not only are our pets family members, but they also become companion. They're also comfort animals and some of them are even therapy animals in the case of our PTSD servicemen. So having a facility like this is more than just caring about animals. It's also caring about ourselves and giving some recognition, or giving recognition, I should say, to, and respect to the animals that look after us. So I commend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise very briefly to also support, um, item A. As many of us appreciate, some people are having more furry friends in their lives that take care of their mental wellbeing, as well as very much part of their family. I very much, unfortunately, I've had to visit the emergency centre a couple of times for my own dogs. One, because my chihuahua was hit by a bicycle and unfortunately died at the hospital. And also, um, one of my other, um, when my daughter's dog got very sick, had to go up there and was luckily saved by this wonderful vet nurses and veterinarians that are up there. The space that they're in now is quite small and it's a very well-used centre. We all love our animals and this new facility will service a lot more of our furry friends in the future. Like children, unfortunately, animals don't get sick during normal veterinary hours. That can, they can have an accident or fall sick at any time. So a twenty-four hour north side emergency centre is very much welcome and the expansion is very much welcome in the north side of Brisbane. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Burke. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of August, twenty nineteen, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Hammond, seconded by councillor Richards. The report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of August, twenty nineteen, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Hammond?
Mr Chair, we had a very informative talk and I, I thank the officers on our beautiful koalas and their movements across the city. And also we had a report on the bushland preservation, I'll leave it to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cumming.
Yes, Chair, in relation to the bushland preservation levy, just want to make a few comments. Firstly, it's interesting to note on page one of the report shows that the, uh, the levy actually raises over thirty million dollars a year in funds for council, thirty million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand and ninety-seven dollars, to be precise, for the actual year ended thirtieth of June, two thousand and nineteen. And the amount spent on bushland acquisition was ten million six hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. So it's only actually thirty-four point three-three percent. Just over a third of the, of the levy is actually spent on purchasing land. So I'm sure, not sure whether the general public's aware of that, but I'm sure they'd be interested in it. The other thing, of course, and in case you didn't hear me earlier, is in reference to the purchase at Carrara and Nurean Streets at Mount Gravat East. And that was in terms of some two hundred and thirty-five pieces of land purchased in this program since the first one was purchased on the twenty-eighth of September, nineteen ninety. It was, that's, uh, I worked out twenty-eight years and eleven months since the first purchase. And the, uh, the, the third most expensive in history was indeed at Carrara Street and Nurean Street. And the, and it was the third most expensive in aggregate dollars, I should, should add. But in terms of cost per hectare, it was the most expensive, the most expensive by some distance, by some distance. The, uh, the second most expensive aggregate wise was at four fifty-eight to five twenty-six prize Pocket Road Mogul, six million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-one, purchased fairly recently as well. But that piece of land was some twenty point two hectares, as opposed to the Mount Gravat East land, which was point four of one hectare. And of course, the most expensive block of land, you'll be interested to know, was the one at Ipswich Road, Wacoal, eight million one hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. But that got council forty point two-three hectares of land. So again, per hectare, far cheaper than the Mount Gravat East land. And as we've heard today, the Mount Gravat East land was purchased without any expert advice on whether it was, uh, whether it was good koala habitat or not, the number of koalas that lived there or whatever. It was just done to bail out councillor Adams from her development problem.
Further speakers, councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman. I just want to rise to talk about item B, which is the Bushland Preservation Levy Report, Mr Chairman. And obviously, this is a program that, as councillor Cumming said, has been running since the twenty-eighth of the ninth, nineteen ninety. And, you know, it was Sally Anne Atkinson, that visionary leader in the city of Brisbane, from a Liberal administration that implemented the bushland acquisition levy, Mr Chairman. We shouldn't forget that because they, it was that administration at that time that was keen to protect and preserve bushland across this city for future generations. And it's something, it's something that every administration since has done and something that this administration has done like no administration before, Mr Chairman, when it comes to buying and protecting bushland, not just in the last three and a bit years, but indeed the preceding four years before that and the four years before that, Mr Chairman, where we bought record amounts of bushland across this city. At-risk bushland that was in private ownership, I might say, Mr Chairman, because one of the key and fundamental tenants, when it comes to the bushland acquisition levy and the program that we've had from the time I was park's chair, when councillor Matic was park's chair, when councillor McLaughlin has been park's chair, and when councillor Hammond has been park's chair, Mr Chairman, is that we have been buying private at-risk bushland. Because we've never thought until about two months ago that we should have to worry about state government-owned bushland in this city, Mr Chairman. Who would have thought that, you know, the main focus and the land that we should be buying is the privately owned bushland, Mr Chairman? Because that is the stuff that is at greatest risk of development in the city of Brisbane. And so in the report before us today, there's quite a long detailed list of sites right across this city, from the north to the south to the east to the west and everywhere in between, Mr Chairman, where council has bought bushland over the years. There's sites in my own ward. Unfortunately, in my time in this place, no acquisitions have happened in my ward because council bought all those sites, Mr Chairman, back in the first term of the Newman administration in this place between two thousand and four and two thousand and eight, Mr Chairman. Because they were the easy acquisitions. We have gone for the last twenty-eight years and ten months, or whatever it was that councillor Cumming added up. They were the easy acquisitions, Mr Chairman, the large parcels of land. The ones where you could get forty, fifty, a hundred hectares of land across this city, Mr Chairman, and buy that land and protect it for future generations. What we are left with and what we are faced now as a city is the small lots, the connectors, the more difficult sites that actually link larger parcels of land together, Mr Chairman. And that's why some of the costs for recent acquisitions have been more than previous acquisitions. Because anyone can go back in history and I can go back to the, the very first one and go, oh, of course, back in nineteen ninety, the eight hundred thousand dollars for the twelve hectares that we bought back then, or back, sorry, that was back in nineteen ninety-eight, or even the eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars we paid for twelve hectares up at the gap back in nineteen ninety, that was a great deal. But that was nineteen ninety. And big blocks of land like that aren't around the city anymore, Mr Chairman. What we do have is more targeted purchases to link and expand existing assets. I have a number of sites in my ward, the Fort Bushland, Wacoal Bushlands and Horizon Drive Bushlands, that were all purchased as part of the bushland acquisition levy. I also have a hundred and eighty-plus hectares, Mr Chairman, at Po Corner, which is an interesting little deal that happened between council and the federal government, Mr Chairman, where the federal government spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars removing the unexploded ordinance from that site and then sold the land to council for one dollar. One dollar, a hundred and eighty thousand, sorry, a hundred and eighty hectares of land for one dollar. Well, I'll tell you something councillor Cumming, that's a great deal from the federal government. It's just a shame that the current state government chooses to play politics with bushland in this city rather than working with council to protect the bushland. That should be protected anyway by the state government, Mr Chairman, through you to councillor Cumming. The kicker though, in the, in the Po Corner deal, was the ninety thousand dollars we had to pay to the state government in stamp duty. So we paid the federal government one dollar for a hundred and eighty hectares of land, Mr Chairman, and the state government took their ninety thousand dollars in stamp duty because we wanted to protect a block of land for future generation when it comes to protecting bushland in this city. So the state government has a track record when it comes to not wanting to invest in bushland, Mr Chairman, because if they'd done the right thing, they should have handed that ninety thousand back and gone, no council, you use that money to protect more bushland. But they were happy to take it, happy to take the ninety thousand dollars while council was investing, protect bushland in this city. But it gets worse because we now have a state government, Mr Chairman, that not only wants to flog land off up at Castle Dine, that wants to sell land at Tui, Mr Chairman, but they also want to flog off nine hectares of land down at Oxley. And they say that no way is it able to be protected, this nine hectares at Oxley, unless council buys it. Because apparently, Mr Chairman, the state government is so addicted to developing and selling off their own land for development that they can't be trusted to protect bushland on behalf of the people of Queensland. And that the people who have to stand up and protect that bushland is Brisbane City Council. Well, that's not on, Mr Chairman, because this is already publicly owned land. The nine hectares at Oxley, the land at Tui, the land in other parts of the city that the state has identified is already publicly owned. And no way should the residents and rate payers of this city have to buy land that they already own to protect it for future generations when the state government should be standing up, doing the job that they should do and protecting that land and managing it appropriately and making sure that we have a green, livable city, not just now, but well into the future, Mr Chairman. And I commend everything that the officers do and that this administration does to protect bushland right across the city and have done for many, many years.
Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Oh, I couldn't let that one go. What an amazing lot of rot, absolute rot. Can I just check with the good councillor over there, do schools pay rates? Do we charge some rates through the chair? Do we charge schools' rates? Does Brisbane City Council charge schools' rates? The answer is yes. But apparently, we don't think we should pay, we think the state should be paying us, but we don't think we should be paying the state anything. What a bizarre argument. A very LMP argument, a very out-of-touch argument, a very big argument in terms of we don't want to solve this problem. We just want to spend the time arguing stupidity. And that's all that argument was from that councillor, a stupid argument.
Ported on, Mr Chairman.
Absolutely.
I'll order to you.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Yep, no, it is noted. Councillor Griffiths.
How absolutely bizarre, just bizarre. But what I did enjoy about that talk, or that speech, or whatever you call it, in the sheer dribble that went on then, was the whole fact that this councillor said he is interested, and the LMP are interested in saving land that is under threat from development. We are the champions of saving land under threat of development. Well councillor, you weren't at the meeting on the edge of your ward on Saturday with the residents regarding sixty-seven Chapman Place at Oxley. You're invisible, in fact, there were no Liberal councillors there and no Liberals there. But there are a whole lot of residents there. And this is the fifth time, the fifth time that a DA has gone on this bushland property. And what have you done to purchase it? Nothing. And now it's under threat again, and what are you doing now? Nothing. So there's the chair of planning saying, what a wonderful job we do, pat me on the back, pat us all on the back. We spend all the money in LMP areas, aren't we, great? What a load of rot. Right now, you can go out and look at sixty-seven Chapman Place, you can even go and check it online because the bushland there hasn't been destroyed, unlike the bushland at Carrara Street, which you might let get ripped apart before she decides to do anything. Why don't you look it up and then why don't you do something about it and go and purchase it? Because this is land we should be purchasing for bushland. It is, it fits your criteria. And can I say, your criteria that you just spoke about aren't the criteria that council has for buying bushland. In fact, this council has no criteria for buying bushland. Nothing. That's why we can see such rotting of these funds. And it is absolute, it is absolute rotting of- rotting of this bushland funding.
Point of order, Councillor Griffiths. Point of order to you, Councillor Burke.
He's now implying motive, and I'd ask you to make him withdraw that comment that he just made, please.
Councillor Griffiths, please, as we've discussed many times in this place, courtesy, proportion are important aspects of speaking in this place, and I ask you to reconsider words such as rotting. Councillor Burke has asked you to withdraw, will you withdraw?
No, I won't. This money is absolutely being rotted. It has been rotted, rotted, rotted by the LMP.
All right.
I will not take that back, no, I will not take that back. Jump up and down, you can call us liars.
Councillor Griffiths, please. Deputy man.
I would like to remind councillor Griffiths that he is imputing motive, and we do not have protection in this place, and he is online right now.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Councillor Griffiths, can you please, into the future, keep your remarks proportionate to what...
The remarks are proportionate, all you have to do is go through this document. I've referred it on to the Order General, we intend to refer it on further. Because what's happening with this funding is disgusting. It is disgusting, and it is wrong, and it stinks. This funding is being abused. And all you need to do is look at the last set of figures for where the land was bought. Once again, it's all in LMP areas. It's almost like it's their own fund. The way they talk, you'd think it was their own money out of their own pockets. It's not. It's the residents of Brisbane's money. And how you're spending it is rotting. And if you're uncomfortable with that, then I think that says a lot about you. If you think buying three vacant house blocks and paying more money for it than what it was worth is good value for the residents of Brisbane, think again. So, let me get back to example of bushland that we should be buying back. 67 Chapman Place, I invite the Lord Mayor, I invite the Deputy Mayor, I invite the Environment Chair out there to meet residents, have a public meeting, and explain to them why you've done nothing about buying that land back, despite me writing to you, despite councillor Johnston raising this issue. Why have you not purchased that land? It is a key corridor link that actually has bushland and wildlife on it! And you jump up and down and say, don't use the word rotting, we're not rotting. Oh, yes, you are. I am just astounded that this administration thinks this is a good use of money. And I'm astounded that this administration wants everything given to them, that they're quite happy to charge the rate, the state rates for every school that's in the city. Imagine if the state didn't pay the rates for having education premises on the city, imagine the uproar. But we want land given to us. Fascinating, it's just fascinating. And what it shows is how political this money's being used, and how the LMP are absolutely distorting what is happening with our bushland. We should be doing so much better with our bushland acquisition fund. We should be in such a better position, but we're not. The dribble we heard today from councillor Burke is pathetic. It is pathetic. And really ill-conceived and illogical. No, Mr Chairman, I won't withdraw rotting, just like councillor Adams over there wouldn't withdraw lying, or the mayor today wouldn't withdraw calling us filth.
Well, now, hang on. Now, councillor Griffiths, I've allowed you to say a great deal of things, but that last one was not true. That last, that was absolutely not true.
We spoke filth, we said filth...
And...
We are filth.
That's negative reflection on me, and that's not what happened at that moment, all right?
Well, it's on record. People can make, people can make their own minds up, the public can make their own minds up. I'm happy for them to see this chamber and see the arguments, or lack of arguments, or the sheer, sheer abuse of the numbers in this chamber. I'm happy for them to see that, and to see the arrogance, and to hear the arguments with regards to bushland levy, because it is wrong, you're out of touch, and this money is being misused.
Councillor Burke, your misrepresentation, please limit your remarks to the matter at hand.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman. I may speak a little bit quickly at times, and councillor Griffiths might not be able to understand the arguments that I put forward, but I made quite a comprehensive case about why council should not have to purchase land that is already protected by the state government using ratepayers' funds, when it should just be protected by the people who already own it. The ratepayers and billpayers are the people of Queensland.
Righto, okay, well, that was too long. Further speakers? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It's quite clear that councillor Johnson isn't here to help councillor Griffiths with his speech, because, quite frankly, half the speech actually didn't make sense whatsoever. I will tell you what's happening with this funding. This administration has accelerated bushland preservation. We have invested approximately $75 million over the past three years to acquire important bushland for conservation. Now, we heard from the leader of the opposition say, not enough is being spent. Well, there's still money, still properties that we're in negotiation with and waiting for settlement, councillor Cummings. So, this money for bushland preservation is not just about buying bushland, it's about taking care of that bushland too, and the Wipeout Weeds Programme. And to go back to councillor Griffiths' statement that states we charge state schools' rates, they are exempt from rates. So, I don't know where he's getting his information from. We are dedicated over here to keep purchasing bushland for our future generations. We have purchased over 722 hectares in three years on this side of the chamber, and by the end of this year, it's going to be 788 hectares, 788 hectares that is preserved under this administration, under this Lord, Lord Mayor, Adrian Schrinner. I am proud to be a part of this administration, who actually just don't talk, don't mislead just so they can tell the public of what's happening, which isn't true, but if we say our lies enough, people may believe it. Bushland preservation is about corridors as well, and protecting our native corridors. They're obsessed with Carrara Street, absolutely obsessed with Carrara Street. Well, so were the residents in councillor Adams' area when a koala was found dead on that block of land that they keep on bringing up.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
No council notes say that there were any koalas...
That is not what a point of order is for. Councillor Hammond, please continue. Councillor Griffiths, that is an act of disorder, and if you do it again, you will be warned. Councillor Hammond.
I like how the opposition love being thrown out and taunt you, and the previous chair to be thrown out all the time.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Strunk.
Could you bring the councillor back to what she was talking about, or supposed to be talking about? Thank you.
Councillor Strunk, she's only... Councillor Hammond, please continue.
I'm going to read into the record that councillor Griffiths just said, chuck me out. That's what I was referring to. Thank you, councillor Burke, I will take that into...
Point of order.
It's better to be a point of order, councillor Griffiths.
I believe I said throw me out.
Again, there's not a point of order. If you misuse point of order, I will...
Arrest my case, Mr Chair. There is so much important...
No, no, councillor Hammond.
Sorry.
Councillor Griffiths, I direct you to cease misusing points of order, and if you do not comply with my direction, you will be warned. Councillor Hammond, please continue.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
We just would like item B taken seriatum. Full voting.
All right, a little bit late. Councillor, section 44.3 reads, if it is intended only to vote on a motion seriatum, then the request must be made prior to the move of the motion. That's councillor Hammond exercising her right of reply, which she is doing. Therefore, we cannot take the seriatum request. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. There is so much to talk about in this beautiful portfolio, but in bushland preservation, there was land bought in, I'm going to say, by council in their 90s, with no trees on it. Mr Chair, no trees. But you have a look at the photo from 2017, bushland preservation money has planted out this block of land. I would also like to touch on my absolute annoyance and disgust that the opposition councillors continue to call our council officers non-experts, that they don't know what they're doing, and they don't know how to purchase land and investigate things. It's an absolute disgrace that they resort to putting down our council officers who work hard to deliver this project. 67 Chapman Street that the councillor brought up, there was an application for this particular property, which council rejected. There was some email through asking us to buy it, but at that stage, it was under the Planning Environment Court. The new development application was put in in June 19 to subdivide the block into one, into four lots. Three of the lots are quite small, 400 square metres, the other lot is quite large, which is covered by trees, which is protected under overlays for the vegetation that is there. And we're not ruling out purchasing any land that is there, but this particular block of land is currently under assessment with a development application on it. The only rot that's happening with bushland preservation, or bushland at the moment, is the Queensland Labor State Government. They are trying to force Brisbane City Council, because they can't, they physically can't look after bushland. So, they want the ratepayers of Brisbane to purchase bushlands that they already own. It is already protected, if the state government can protect this land, it is already owned by the people and residents of Brisbane. And the state government do not have to sell it off for a cash grab to developers, which they want to do, because we know there is already subdivision plans of one of these large blocks that the state government want to flog off to a private developer for a cash grab. Instead, on this side of the chamber, we are absolutely determined to continue purchasing our bushland preservation on privately-owned properties, not properties that are owned, and I'm going to say it again, owned by the state government, and the people of Brisbane already will continue to buy those privately-owned properties, and continue to grow our bushland across our city, because we're sitting at 37% green cover at the moment, and our aim is to get to the 40% green cover. So, I know, under this Lord Mayor, Adrian Schrinner, we will continue to buy privately-owned bushland to preserve not just, oh, actually, they think it's ours, that's so funny, we'll continue to preserve this land for the ratepayers of Brisbane. Because this land is not just for LMP, or ALP, or Greens, or independent councillors, it's not ours at all. It's the ratepayers of Brisbane who own this land. I will close off again with the dribble that we had from over there, because he kept on saying dribble, and I want to close off his false statement, misleading, but we take it from them over there, because we know they mislead the community all the time. I will repeat it again, the state schools are exempt from paying rates. So, we do not collect rates from state schools, like the councillor over there had said. Again, I'm delighted, can't wait till our 788 hectare comes into Brisbane City Council ownership for the ratepayers of Brisbane by the end of this year. Thank you, Mr Chair.
I'll now put to resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Hammond and the Lord Mayor. Ayes to my right, ayes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour, one against, and five abstentions.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, the Field Services Committee report, please. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting, held on Tuesday, the 27th of August 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 27th of August 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. The acting manager of construction in Field Services provided a very interesting presentation last week on the entry gate refurbishment of the Japanese gardens at Mount Cootha. And the chamber will have recall that we had a fantastic event celebrating the 30 years of the Japanese gardens just recently. So, located in the Brisbane Botanic Gardens at Mount Cootha, the Japanese garden displays the entry gate from the Japanese pavilion at Expo 88, which was donated to the city of Brisbane. We had the exciting opportunity to learn about the incredible detail of the construction activities undertaken to refurbish the entry gate and to replicate the build style from 30 years ago, including how our officers worked hard on sourcing sustainable and appropriate materials, preserving and retaining original materials such as the roof, using specialised building techniques. This restoration project presented a great training opportunity for council apprentices, given that a lot of research was undertaken in order to respect the original construction of the entry gate. This refurbishment should serve a life of 50 years, therefore, it truly was a unique learning experience for all involved. I would like to commend our officers for their incredible hard work and craftsmanship. It was clear to the committee that everyone involved poured their absolute heart and soul into this restoration. It was beautiful to see the exceptional teamwork, dedication, and passion of our officers shine through to restore this special symbol of friendship between Brisbane and Japan. This project was a magnificent demonstration of council's values, and I can't express enough our thanks to our talented officers and apprentices. And, Mr Chair, I recommend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put to resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Community Arts and Lifestyle Report, please. Councillor Maddick.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting, held on Tuesday, 27th of August 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Maddick, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 27th of August 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Maddick.
Before I get the report, Mr Chairman, just two quick points. Firstly, the launch of Big Sound this week, which will be an important event for our city. This significant cultural event is, really delivers on so many different levels, not only the opportunity for emerging and established artists to really show their great talent throughout different venues in the valley this week, but importantly also, as a forum for industry. As I've said before in this chamber, Big Sound has the ability to bring together producers and music companies from throughout the world to Brisbane for this conference. companies from throughout the world to Brisbane for this conference, giving an enormous opportunity to all our artists to be seen and to be heard, and to provide them with that opportunity to raise their career to a whole new level. So councillor's a very proud supporter of Big Sound, has been in the past, continues to date, and I can't encourage councillors enough to get the word out about this important music festival and its value to all artists throughout our city. The second point, Mr Chairman, is I'm pleased to advise the chamber again that the OzContact Awards were held this week in Brisbane at Victoria Park, and that the Call Centre again was a finalist and a winner for customer service. There were a number of offices also in the areas of People's Champion and finalists in the areas of Digital Channel Champion and Workforce Management Champion. But it just continues to highlight the Call Centre, its enormous success and the value it brings to council, but importantly as that tool for residents to be able to engage and communicate. And can I acknowledge the significant work of all the officers in the Call Centre operations, but also back of house, their passionate commitment to a better Brisbane. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance and Administration Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting held on Tuesday the twenty seventh of August two thousand and nineteen be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor McLaughlin, the report of the Finance Administrative, Finance and Administration Committee meeting dated Tuesday the twenty seventh of August twenty nineteen be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last Tuesday, the Finance and Administration Committee received a presentation on the Administration Traineeship Programme. The Administration Traineeship Programme is one of many employment programmes that the council undertakes for job seekers in Brisbane. The programme offers a twelve month paid traineeship to train participants with the skills, training and experience to give their careers a bit of a kickstart. On completion, participants receive nationally recognised qualifications, including a certificate three in business. Like most of our employment programmes, the real benefit is getting a foot in the door for any council jobs in particular, but certainly in the wider marketplace. Perhaps not surprisingly, anecdotally, we hear that when jobs are coming up within various council divisions, they hold back the job applications until some of these trainees come through their programme and they are snaffled up, because clearly by the time they've done the programme, they've got an excellent working knowledge of a couple of key areas within council. So that's a great testament to the quality of the programme. Since council started the programme in two thousand and ten, seventy trainees have completed the programme. And also, I guess, in response to a question that councillor Cumming raised last week about the funding of this particular programme and the funding partnerships that we have in place, corporate trainees are fully funded from the Lord Mayor's Youth Traineeships and Works Programme budget. And for a business administration trainee, council receives fifteen hundred dollars as a commencement incentive payment and twenty five hundred dollars as a completion incentive from the federal government. We also receive sixteen thousand five hundred dollars per trainee in first start funding for the placement of ten new trainees under the Queensland Government Skilling Queenslanders for Work Initiative via a bidding process conducted by the Local Government Association of Queensland. That's probably all I want to mention about the report, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Deputy Mayor.
Mr Chairman, I table a petition requesting council for free off peak public transport to Brisbane rate traders and optional rates discount for ratepayers who do not support free off peak public transport.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I lay on the table a petition to install lights along the footpath at Rhodey Road Dog Park, from Rhodey Road to Remick Street in Stafford Heights.
Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I have a petition here about altering the zoning of the Green Hill Reservoir Off Leash Dog Park.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Chair. I have a petition from residents in my area requesting that Albion Park Dog Park become or have part of it turned into a designated small dog off leash area.
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have a petition requesting council not to proceed with the proposed community gardens at James Warner Park Kangaroo Point.
Councillor Cumming.
Thanks, Chair. Three petitions, one in relation to containers in Walnut Street at Winham, a hard copy of petition followed by a petition on the same topic, and also a petition calling for removal of bollards at Lewis Place.
Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I'm presenting a petition on behalf of councillor Johnson, requesting that council allows Missy May to continue trading at seventeen Grenodes Road Yoronga without interruption.
May I please have a resolution to adopt, to accept the petitions, I should say?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Rich, and seconded by councillor Strunk, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. General business, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just stand to report on the business mission that I was on last week when I was not here in the chambers to Chongqing, a very special sister city coming up on fifteen years next year for that sister city relationship. And it was my absolute honour to represent Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and the council administration to spend some time going back and thanking Chongqing for their delegation of Vice Mayor Madame Tan and a large delegation of businessmen that came to join us for the Asia Pacific City Summit. It's been a long day, Mr Chair, sorry. I thank the Chongqing government for supporting my travel over there. It was a fantastic forum, it was on smart cities. It is now been decided by the party in China that the smart cities forum will always be held in Chongqing from every year, so every year it will be the smart cities forum in Chongqing as the starting place of the Silk Road High Speed Logistics Train Route. So it starts in Chongqing, it finishes in Germany, there's many cities in between, but it is absolutely amazing the technology and the infrastructure they have now for that freight that they carry from China through to Germany, which obviously was originally discovered by Marco Polo or people before him, that they now do it on high speed trains with the amazing logistics that they have at their freight centres as well. Chongqing is a little larger than its sister city here in Brisbane, there is thirty million people that live in Chongqing, but they call themselves a city of natural beauty and special cultural creation. They are very proud of their mountainous city, it's surrounded by a lot of green, but as you can imagine with thirty million people in there, it's a much higher density than we have here in Brisbane. And even just travelling about five kilometres across the city can take anywhere from thirty minutes to forty five minutes. As I said, the hospitality is fantastic. I have to say to any of you that if you have the opportunity to go to Chongqing, you can absolutely not miss the Chongqing hot pot. They are renowned for it, and I can absolutely understand why. I had the great pleasure of joining the deputy mayor for the Round Table of Sister Cities and Friendship Cities. There was forty of us, mayors and deputy mayors from right around the world, sharing their advances in smart technology where they are when it comes to using innovation and technology in their cities. And I was very proud to talk about what we've done in Brisbane, because we are, may not be ahead on the actual technology available to us compared to what they have in China, but we're definitely ahead in the governance, how we're managing it through our smart connected office. And a lot of mayors that were interested in speaking to me after that presentation on how we had set up our governance procedures for people to do business with Brisbane when it came to smart connected opportunities as well. They also had a smart cities aspect around smart transport as well, that I spoke at in the opening ceremony of that as well, and talked about again, the opportunities and the infrastructure that we're developing here in Brisbane. I think it was a little bit odd to them, though, that we were talking about density and moving people in a congested city of about a million people when they had thirty million people. It was extremely hot, it was thirty eight degrees, it was like an oven when you stepped out, but it was actually a very beautiful city and so very, very different from ours. They send their love back to Brisbane as a sister city, and we're already talking about ways that we can celebrate that fifteenth anniversary next year of the original sister city signing. It was, as I said, an absolute pleasure to represent the Brisbane City Council and can strongly recommend Chongqing as a place to visit if you have the opportunity to go to the Chinese mainland.
Further general business items, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on three events that happened over the last couple of weeks. Last weekend, or sorry, last weekend, Simply Bliss held a family fun day. Now, this is a small coffee shop just down on the lake in the old sales office that Delphin used for many years. It's been a little coffee shop down there that the former owner Astrid started, and the new owner Denise and her husband have taken it over, and they have done some wonderful things to, doing an upgrade of it, and a little bit more fair as well. They wanted to sort of showcase that, what they've done to maybe some customers that haven't, that haven't come down to the shop for a while, and so they held a little family fun day with jumping castle, face painting and some balloon making as well, and some great coffee, which I can highly recommend. The family fun day went for about two or three hours, and they got some really good numbers, which they're very happy. It's really nice to see small business start thriving down there on the lake. Another event that happened last week was, or earlier this week I should say, was the Road Safety Day event in the civic centre that was undertaken by the Vietnamese chapter in Queensland. Great local organisation that do some wonderful work within our community, and they were wanting to promote, of course, Road Safety Week. There was a good contingent of police officers and another supporting people from the local police station to sort of answer questions that many of the public took the advantage to do so. I asked senior Sergeant Craig McKenzie how things were going, and he recounted the story of a speeding infringement happening in Blunder Road a few weeks, a few days before, where a motorcyclist was caught doing a hundred and sixty kilometres an hour in the seventy zone. So that was just one of the events that happened, and it's really important that we try to get to the community to see reason when it comes to speeding along a road. It never, it's something that causes many, many deaths right across Queensland and right across Australia. So the more we can do in this area, the better. Finally, Mission Possible, a group who supports many organisations right across Brisbane, even up through to Radcliffe. This organisation, headed up by Gail Pope, and I'm sure many of the councillors, some councillors here on the south side know of her great work. What she does is that she has many, many groups, whether they're doing quilting or knitting or sewing, make little, make items that will actually be given to hospital, to a number of hospitals in Brisbane and down at Logan, to support those kids that are in care. Also, they also produce a lot of material that also supports the homeless, and many other organisations that deal with people that are doing it tough as we, as we, as we, as we came into, certainly came into winter, because they do a lot of beanies and all that knitted stuff, hamknit and stuff that you would absolutely pay a fortune for in the shop. And they just do it out of the kindness of their heart, and they just give it to the, give it to people in need. And it's just, I'm always touched when they just roll in another trolley, trolley full of stuff that we can give out to some of our agencies in the Anala and Forest Lake Ward. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to Gail and the many, many hundreds of volunteers that help her throughout the year. They do some great work. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Cunningham.
Chair, I rise to speak on the wonderful Stones Corner community in my ward. I love Stones Corner. With access to high frequency public transport, an increasing local population, the revitalisation of Hanlon Park, and new businesses opening, it has a bright future. Council has recognised this as well, and is delivering a major six hundred thousand dollar refurbishment of the Stones Corner Library this year. The refurbishment will give new energy to this much loved community hub, which has served locals for over seventy years. This LNP administration is also passionate about supporting the night time economy, and with great bars and restaurants in Stones Corner, there is much on offer. Council recognises this, and to support this precinct, thanks to the leadership of councillor Burke, council will install bud lighting on the trees in the public space in front of Stones Corner Library as part of the City of Lights Programme. This will create a glowing and Instagrammable entry statement for the precinct. Local traders have welcomed these announcements, and I meet with them regularly through our Stones Corner traders meetings. Since becoming the councillor for Cooperu Ward, I've attended every meeting of this local committee so that I can be across the issues of concern to traders and identify where my office or council more broadly can assist. Through my interactions with local traders, I was made aware of rumours that the Stones Corner post office was due to shut in late November this year. The current post office premises are due to be demolished, but Australia Post did not announce arrangements to provide a replacement facility. Instead, they informed locals and businesses of options further away. This was of concern to me, local traders and residents who rely on the post office for their P O boxes, but also to connect to the world of e-commerce, to pay bills, and for a range of other important services. It was clear to me that any move by Australia Post to let the post office close without replacement services in Stones Corner was simply unacceptable to my residents and traders. So in partnership with local business owners, most prominently Michael Weebler from Books at Stones, we got to work to see what could be done. I immediately wrote to the Federal Communications Minister to inform him of the situation and to ask for any solution that would provide continued postal services for my community. I also invited Senator Amanda Stoker to visit Stones Corner so I could introduce her to business owners who could tell her firsthand what the impact of the closure would be. Senator Stoker joined the campaign, and together we have gathered hundreds of signatures and have brought media attention to this local issue. Since launching my campaign, other representatives have tried to turn this issue into an opportunity to score points on political opponents. I instead remain focused on working towards a practical solution to support my Stones Corner community. Discussions are ongoing, and we remain hopeful that there may be a positive outcome. At the very least, we need a community postal agent in Stones Corner. Regardless of what happens, I do want to put on record my disappointment. The bottom line is that the future development of the current post office site is no excuse for removing postal services. All Australia Post has done is deliver a package of uncertainty. I thank the local traders and residents in Stones Corner who work so hard to make it a vibrant community, and I will continue to partner with them to make Stones Corner even better into the future.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak briefly about homelessness, and I wanted to acknowledge the announcement from a few days back that the council administration made regarding the pathways out of homelessness funding, and to thank sincerely the Lord Mayor for allocating that money. I think it's a positive step, and it gives me some hope that the councillors at least listen to the very serious concerns about rising homelessness in this city. But I wanted to make very clear and ensure that the administration is under no illusions that one million dollars is a drop in the ocean and goes nowhere near far enough to help address this growing crisis, and falls far short of what a council of this size and with this level of resources could reasonably be expected to deliver. Now, I know it sounds like a lot of money when we talk about building thousands of homes to get people off the street, but this council does have the capacity to do that. If we can take on millions and millions of dollars of debt to build toll bridges and tunnels and widen roads, then we can take on debt to build affordable community housing to get housing to get the most vulnerable members of our community off the street. And I think this council administration needs to start seriously considering that option. I also really want to emphasise that money is one thing, but really what this council administration needs to be doing is to start pulling those other policy levers that will stop the treatment or at least discourage the treatment of housing as a commodity. They've been discussing this chamber in the past, but it, it really does come down to the fact that this council is accelerating and encouraging rapid gentrification, which forces up land values, not to the benefit of owner occupiers, not to the benefit of people who own their own homes, but to the benefit of wealthy landlord investors who stockpile and buy up large chunks of land and then wait for the value to rise without contributing positively to society. This is a chronic problem in Brisbane and it's a major factor contributing to rising rates of homelessness. So to all the councillors in this place, I really want to emphasise that throwing a million dollars at this issue is not going to fix it, but you do have the power to end homelessness in this city. That's not naive or utopian or unrealistic. We could do this if there was the political will to do so. And to me, it's, it's really disappointing that we still live in a city where we take for granted or accept as inevitable that homelessness will continue to rise, even though the rate of construction of new housing is outstripping population growth. If our popular, if the number of new houses and apartments being built is, is rising but faster than the rate of population growth, then clearly the supply of housing is not the core problem. It is the treatment of housing as a commodity and the profiteering by a small wealthy elite who continue to exploit the rest of us and particularly those most vulnerable residents at the bottom of the economic pyramid. So, Lord Mayor, I hope that this is the first of many announcements that you'll be making to help address homelessness in this city. I hope you're not sitting at home patting yourself on the back saying, job done, I can wash my hands of this issue now and just go back to blaming the state government. I hope this is the start of something much bigger and more significant. And to all the councillors in this place, I want to remind you that through you, Mr Chair, you all have a responsibility to do something about homelessness in this city. It's not enough to blame it on the state or federal government, it's not enough to pass the buck to the private sector. This city council has a range of policy levers available, it has the money and the borrowing capacity to deliver affordable housing for people on low incomes and it can end homelessness in this city if you want it to.
Further speakers, councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak about the great work Meals on Wheels do right here across our great city. Last Wednesday was National Meals on Wheels Day and it was great to see so many of the councillors in this chambers out and about helping our local community. I had the great pleasure of doing the Yellow Run with Penny from the Carina Meals on Wheels. Penny has been a Meals on Wheels volunteer for over five years and gives up roughly fifteen hours of her week to make and deliver meals to local residents. I'm also lucky enough to celebrate another Meals on Wheels milestone this month, the opening of the new Winham-Manly District Meals on Wheels facility on Manly Road in Wakely, spearheaded by Ken and Irene Edwards, Bill McFarland and countless other volunteers from our community. The new facility is a far cry from the St Oswald's Church Hall in Winham North, where meals were first prepared in the late sixties for a cost of twenty-five cents each. The Winham and Manly District Meals on Wheels now produces three hundred, sorry, thirty thousand meals annually for over a hundred and forty clients. This is a staggering effort from our local volunteers to make this dream become a reality. Their wonderful efforts will now benefit our entire community, giving them a greater capacity to cook more meals and at a professional standard. Volunteering is the lifeblood of this organisation. They provide door-to-door service of quality meals, they check on the wellbeing of their clients, provide regular contact and social interactions and as our, sorry, and as our population ages and chooses to stay at home, it is more important now than ever that we provide these services to our neighbours. And we thank them for their service to our elderly residents. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise tonight to speak on multicultural months and I would just like to say that as August was multicultural month and there were thirty-one days in August, I'd like to acknowledge thirty-one different multicultural events that are part of the fabric of our city. Certainly, we, I started off with the Sagram Music Academy, which is a group of young children that have been performing at many different multicultural opportunities and they are developing their skills in multiple languages of their singing. I also would like to acknowledge the French Navy ship, which was here in port that week as well, and also the Punjabi Welfare Association of Australia White Christmas. Now, that was interesting in itself because it was a white Christmas celebrated by the Punjabi community in a Chinese restaurant and it certainly shows how the diversity in our city is embraced and shared between many different multicultural community groups. I would also like to acknowledge the Multicultural Development Association for the citizenship ceremony at which Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinna was presiding officer on the fourth of August. The citizens there, they had the opportunity to then go to a Brisbane Lions game and can I say, it was a very successful Brisbane Lions game and those new citizens were afforded the opportunity to actually go down onto the ground and form a guard of honour for the Brisbane Lions coming out. And it's just wonderful to be able to, to have that opportunity to converse with the new citizens as they're watching their very first AFL game. And this is a great partnership between Brisbane City Council, MDA, Brisbane Lions and also AFL Queensland. The ninth of August brought about Singapore National Day as well and I would like to acknowledge my good friend, the ambassador, the High Commissioner who was here in Brisbane for that Singapore National Day and to all of the people who were involved in pulling that very important celebration together in King George Square. They do an amazing job and certainly it brings a taste of Singapore to our city. I followed that up with an oriental ball which was held by the Church of Latter Day Saints and they embrace people from many different cultures and it was wonderful to be with them. To my good friends in the Sri Lankan community, it was a pleasure to once again attend your annual dinner and we also had the outgoing consul general and he's very disappointed to be leaving Australia, but he has been seconded back to Sri Lanka and we do recognise his efforts in making sure that the Sri Lankan community here in Brisbane are very well supported. On the eleventh of August, I attended a Kokoda Day commemoration and what was important about that is that we had direct descendants of the Fuzzy Wuzzy Angels here present in Brisbane for that very significant commemoration. And I would say that to all of those veterans who defended our nation in New Guinea, a very big thank you for their service. My good friend councillor Huang and I also attended the Worldwide Oceania Hakka Federation events here and we had delegates from all over the world. This is a significant conference and many of the councillors here would remember when Mr Frank Wu, the president of the Hakka Association, came in and spoke about this in the chamber. To the Vietnamese community, I know that Vietnam Veterans Day was important not only to you but also to our Vietnam veterans and we do certainly have that held very close to our heart here in the city of Brisbane. To our Brisbane citizens of the year, Umees and Usha Chandra, you never cease to amaze me with the amount of energy that you put into the India Day Fair, along with the many, many, many different community groups from the Indian community right across Brisbane and the businesses that support the India Day Fair at Roma Street Parklands. I know quite a number of councillors on this side of the chamber attended. I was there to do the official opening. I know that councillor Howard was there to present an award, the Lord Mayor was there to provide a speech, councillor Marks was there, I think councillor Cooper was there, councillor Allen was there. So we had quite a number of councillors, councillor Wines was there as well. We, we had a great, councillor Davis, I think you were there too? And so we had a very good contingent from this side of the chamber at that very auspicious event and there were thousands of people there. I would like to thank the Nepalese women for their kind welcoming at the Tej Festival. They certainly had a bit of a smaller event compared to India Day Fair, but it was no less in significance. It was wonderful to be welcomed by them. To the Indonesian students who coordinated from our local universities, these are international students and some of our student ambassadors who work with us as part of our study Brisbane process, were involved in coordinating Pestja Rakat. And that was wonderful to see these young people driving this festival and making sure it was a success in our city. The following week, we saw the Indos Business Networking Dinner, Indos Festival. It was a pleasure once again to have the consul general and the ambassador here in King George Square for the Indos Festival. And we have such a variety of opportunities to, to really embrace these many, many different cultures. Can I say as well, we have some independence days that all coincide at the same time and it's great to know in our city of Brisbane that people can celebrate these festivities in a safe and inclusive manner and welcome in the wider community. So to the Liberian Association of Queensland, I attended their Independence National Flag Day. To the Ukrainian Independence Day celebrations, that was, that was quite wonderful to, to also attend, especially given some of the work that I've been doing in my family tree and there is a family member who was born in the Ukraine. Then we proceeded on through the months to Jan Mastami Festival, which was held by ISCOM at the Croatian Club. So that's a very different situation where you have an Indian community having an event at the Croatian Club. Certainly, the Gujarati celebrations of Lord Krishna's birthday was a wonderful event to attend at Acacia Ridge and followed by the Fijian Senior Citizens Association Multicultural Day. And I know councillor Cunningham, you enjoyed being there for that one and certainly we must recognise Serendra Prasad O A M for the wonderful work that he does, bringing together not only leaders of multicultural communities but also people from different religions and the wider community for that event. This weekend has been quite, this past weekend has been quite significantly busy through attending the Malayi Theory of Attira and the Dhuwani Empowering Women, starting, starting off with that at the beginning of Saturday, followed by the Taste of Egypt Festival at the Coptic Orthodox Church in Calumbar, followed quite soon after by the Moon Festival, the World Arts Multicultural Inauguration Ceremony, the Brisbane Punjabi Cultural Club Annual Function, the Divijayoti Gitter Management Workshop, the B A P S Temple Function for celebrating Lord Krishna's birthday, followed by a Gujarati Garba and that was just on Saturday. So, Sunday, Lord Mayor, it was my pleasure to represent you at the Serbian Festival and can I say that the, the weekend was an absolutely spectacular weekend for multicultural functions, particularly when they were outside. Some of the wonderful things that you can experience at all of these multicultural festivals is not just the sense of community, but it's the sense of inclusion and welcome. And every single one of these multicultural community events welcomes people from the wider Brisbane community as part of our Brisbane family. It's a great place to go and experience culture, it's a great place to go and experience food, arts, music, but most importantly, to share with the people from multicultural backgrounds their celebration and learn more about the diversity of our city. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak about the Dogs Breakfast, which I co-hosted with councillor Lisa Atwood and the Lord Mayor on the thirty-first of August, Saturday, just gone, Mr Chair. It's always tough going after councillor Owen when it comes to the amount of social events that I had on the weekend. I thought I was doing pretty good at five events. I now feel woefully inadequate. Thanks very much for that councillor Owen. Mr Chair, we've had a problem the last couple of weeks in this city in respect of dog baiting. What began as one or maybe even two incidents with purpose has led to a spate of, no pun intended, copycat attacks across the city. But I'm mindful of the fact that none of these have thus far been verified by police independently, other than one baiting attack which occurred on private property. And we are seeing unfortunately, social media acting as a megaphone for people out there who are repeating this, endangering the lives of what are, in many cases, some of the most loved members of people's families, sometimes the only companion that people have in their family, their four-legged friends. And it has been extremely distressing for me to see the local dog-off-leash areas in Chandler Ward start to empty up. The biggest dog-off-leash area, it's actually on the boundary of Chandler Ward and Doughboy Ward, it's technically in councillor Atwood's ward, but is the Meadowlands Road Dog Off-Leash Area. I took my family's cavoodle honey down there the other day to socialise her because she's an eighteen-week-old cavoodle and apparently to, to, to socialise these dogs, to give them the succor that they need, you need to take them out and expose them to other dogs of all different walks of life. But it was a useless enterprise for me, Mr Chair, because the dog park was empty. And how sad is that there is no sight of a, than a, a little cavoodle running around a dog park looking for some friends, only that the dog park is sadly empty. So I had an idea, teamed up with councillor Atwood and we wanted to put on a Dogs Breakfast. This is now three weeks ago. We very quickly pulled together this event by our bootstraps. We invited Three Elements Coffee to come down and supply free coffee in the morning. It's a fantastic organisation, Three Elements Coffee, Terry McNally runs it, he does a fantastic job raising money for veterans, people who've served in our armed forces who need to find a career after they've served their country. He came down with a small crew and provided coffee that morning. He served over a thousand cups of coffee, which was just tremendous to see. We had, we had the original pet bone drink there, Sam offering his pet bone drink to a lot of the dogs and they just love that. And we had our Belmont Road Vet as well come down. They provided a whole range of wonderful raffle prizes to dog owners completely for free. They did this with only two weeks' notice and they had a line going all the way down to the toilet block from the gate of the dog park, which was just incredible. We were also supported by one of the greatest providers of produce, rural produce outlets. So I think probably only Chandler Ward and Pullenvale Ward have one of these, but it's Kapalabar Produce owned by Nick. Nick came down and he had a beautiful setup with all these hay bales and obstacles and little tunnels for the dogs to, to run through. Bill's Burgers and London Spuds as well came down to provide a bit of food for the humans that wanted to come down with the dogs. Of course, we're also really well supported by R S P C A Queensland, the South East Advertiser and Channel Seven, which helped to provide some publicity to the event, all up. We had around fifteen hundred people come to support what was a great reclaiming of the Meadowlands Road Dog Off-Leash Area, because we're not going to let the actions of a couple of baiters besmirch the very good reputation of this city's dog-off-leash areas. We are not going to let them win. So I want to thank, I want to thank the community of Doughboy Ward, of Chandler Ward. And actually, we had, it was really strange, we had people coming from all around. I don't, I honestly don't know how they saw it. We had people from, you know, Rothwell and Runcorn, we had some people from there, we had people from Ipswich, we had people from Logan areas, we had people coming down from the Sunshine Coast. I just don't know, you know, what really motivates the, the really serious dog people, but you know, when they see a dog event, they are in it to win it and they came down, they... And they came down, they turned out in their thousands. And I really want to thank them because the day after, the dog park was full. And every day since that Dog's Breakfast, it has been full. So, I really want to just thank the residents, particularly the eastern suburbs of Brisbane, for coming together to support their four-legged friends, to enliven and activate our dog parks once again. I think if we can keep up this strong presence, of course with the support of the Lord Mayor and his strong CCTV programme which he's enacted, I think we can make our dog parks feel like a really safe place to be in for our four-legged friends once again.
Further speakers, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I want to just speak very briefly on the month of August with the multicultural month to echo councillor Owen's words about what an extremely busy month that was. I know in the last census that it showed that the Runcorn Ward was the most multicultural ward at Brisbane, followed by McGregor, then Calenvale. So, the three councils on the South Side, we've been extremely busy. I know in fact that I actually did 27 days and nights in a row, but I won't bore everyone with all those events that I went to. I just want to mention one that I went to in particular that was very dear to my heart, which is actually the multicultural awards for Queensland, the state government holds. And that's purely and simply because quite a number of my residents were listed as finalists. And then in particular, my very good friend Nadia Said, who was a school leader, prefect at the ICB when I was there as a councillor. She actually won my Carol Watha Community Award two years in a row. And she's now gone on to do even bigger and better things. And the fact that she won the multicultural Queensland Award, Minister's Multicultural Award, was very satisfying. And I was very pleased to be there to share her night with her and her friends. Thank you very much.
Further speakers. I declare the meeting closed.